Okay, thank you everybody. I'd like to call this special meeting the Board of Trustees to order. Could we please have the roll?
Yes. Trustee Bauer?
Here.
Trustee Goldberg?
Here.
Trustee Gould?
Here.
Trustee Levinson?
Here.
Trustee Rosner?
Here.
President Warby?
Here.
Thank you. Adequate notice of this meeting had been provided to the press in accordance with the Unpublic Meetings Act. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted in Village Hall and on the Village's website, and has been filed in the office of the Village Clerk. Official action may be taken at tonight's special meeting.
Thank you. And our executive session resolution?
Thank you. This is Resolution 213-070, a resolution authorizing an executive session at the April 8th meeting of the Board of Trustees.
Thank you. And the matter is to be discussed in executive session under personnel matters or salary proposals and merit pay proposals and salary ordinance, the recreation operating manual under purchases or acquisition of real property, Block 1006, Lot 11. What is that? Oh. Contract matter, SOPA transfer of ownership and litigation matter, 243, Irving F. Do we have a motion?
Move.
Moved by Trustee Rosner, seconded by Trustee Bauer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll be back here at 8 o'clock. Thank you. Yeah, that one.
Okay. Okay, thank you everybody, that's why I do that.
Hi.
Welcome everybody back to the special meeting of our Board of Trustees. Could we have the roll again please?
Certainly. Trustee Bauer.
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Present.
Trustee Goldberg.
Here.
Trustee Gould. Trustee Levinson.
Here.
Trustee Rosner.
Here.
And President Torpe.
Here.
Thank you.
Can everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing. Thank you. Okay, a couple of announcements to get started. Just want to remind everybody that Public Works is collecting leaf and lawn and garden ratings on April 1st. You can take things, please place them in biodegradable bags or small branches that are less than four inches can be basically bundled up and put at the curb. Please try not to put them actually in the street if you can just kind of balance them or put them right between the sidewalk and the curb, that would be best. The 36th Annual Interfaith Holocaust Remembrance Service will be held Sunday, April 14th. The March of Remembrance begins at 3:15 PM in Grove Park here in South Orange and those assembled will proceed to Jubilee Hall at Seton Hall University for the service which begins at 4:00 PM. Anybody that is coming for the service can bring donations of non-perishable food and paper products for the Food Bank of New Jersey. South Orange River Day will take place Sunday, May 5th from 11:00 AM until 4:00 PM down at the Duck Pond. This is one of our most fun and productive community gatherings. It's organized by the South Orange Environmental Commission to help clean up the roadway river and promote environmental awareness in town. There's going to be live music, an ecology walk, soccer clinic and a lot more. So if you're interested in that, to learn a little bit more you can visit soriverday.org. Another reminder that there is a municipal election which will be held here Tuesday, May 14th for three village trustee positions to serve four-year terms. The polls are open 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM on the 14th. The deadline to register to vote in this municipal election is April 23rd and the deadline to apply for an application to vote by mail is May 7th. For more information you can contact our clerk at clerk@southorange.org or call 973-378-7715, extension 1. Tonight we have Lisa Hackett and Matt Glass from the South Orange Village Center Alliance who are going to present first quarter update from the South Orange Village Center Alliance.
Hello everyone. I'm Matt Glass, I'm the Board Chair of the South Orange Village Center Alliance. We came to you last time with our proposed budget for 2013 which you so graciously approved and a lot has happened since then. So tonight Lisa and I are here to tell you about our first quarter progress. I think I've said to most of you that the most important thing we did in fourth quarter 2012 slash first quarter 2013 was hiring Lisa Hackett. She's been here, how many weeks? 12 weeks now and she's been completely enmeshed in this community and is really, one of the things we're trying to do is try to best manage her time because she's got so much to do. So she's going to take you through what we've been up to for the last three months. I want to pause one second for those trustees who are departing the board and thank you for helping us get the improvement district launched and a special thank you to Trustee Gould who serves on our board and has done an amazing job even filling in when, before Lisa had begun. So we appreciate all the confidence you've all put into us and Nancy will miss you very, very much when you become a citizen again. So it's my pleasure to introduce the not-so-new-anymore Executive Director of the South Orange Village Center Alliance, Lisa Hackett.
Thank you very much, Matt. President Torpe, Board of Trustees, Mr. Lewis, Mr. Rather, Robin Chanel. Thank you for having me tonight. It's been, as Matt said, the past 12 weeks have just been a whirlwind but I really think that 2013 is really South Orange's year, I really do. And we have a lot to tell you about today, I'll try and make it quick. For first quarter, one of our strongest committees is really our business recruitment and retention team. We have had the best turnout, the best volunteerism at these meetings. We meet in the morning and we meet at night. Some of the initiatives that we're launching in 2013 are updating the Doing Business in South Orange packet to recruit new businesses into town. The last time this was updated was in about 2008 and we have a lot of folks working on that, so that'll be coming up soon. We've been scheduling business owner breakfasts every month, we've had great turnout, great participation for those. We're meeting with Sal Renda and Tony Grenci to go over the code and the ordinances in town to help continue to make South Orange a business-friendly community. We prepared a letter to go to homeowners that have come to South Orange within the past three years. That mailing is probably going to go out this week. Many of you have been invited. We have about five ribbon cuttings scheduled for Saturday, April 27th in town, five new businesses and possibly more, which is great. The Gateway, Eda Usos Building, the groundbreaking is Tuesday, May 7th, 9:00 AM.
Is that the BIFIS location?
It is the BIFIS location, yes. And we would love for you all to come as well as members of the community, it's very exciting, 10 years in the making. And our efforts continue on the blockbuster space. We've been actively recruiting possible tenants, merchants from some surrounding towns that have been looking to open a second business have been coming through. We just need a little bit more time on that space. We have an inventory and an audit of all available space within the CID footprint for the first and second floors, that's taking place. We have a team of volunteers that are going out on Tuesday, April 16th, they're going to document all the available space and we'll have a great inventory that'll be published on our website, it'll be available in our office and that'll really help the business recruitment effort. We have had a fair amount of businesses coming through looking for space in South Orange which has been great. Also in first quarter, I'm sure you've noticed, we've got a lot of positive feedback regarding the maintenance in downtown, the overall cleanup. We have two part-time workers, Carnell and Asher, that are here six days a week. Carnell works from 6:00 to 10:00, Asher works from 10:00 to 2:00. They have done everything from return shopping carts to contact Department of Public Works when a mattress or a broken chair ends up dropped at the train trestle and just general cleanup. We had a spill on South Orange Avenue of wine bottles and beer bottles, that got cleaned up. Everything gets taken care of almost instantaneously. Definitely same day, definitely within four hours of when we see something out there in the footprint. It's been working, I think, really well. We, they have uniforms, they have hats. They've already been contacted from a number of people about their hats, wanting to know where they can buy their hats, which is just great. It's a tribute to the new logo that we have, the uniforms have been ordered. So if anyone sees things in town that aren't appropriate or things that need to be cleaned up, we've had people contact us about phone books that have been sitting out in the rain too long that are sprawled all over the street, all kinds of different things and we've taken care of them right away.
We only have six hats, so we have to purchase more.
Events, so what everyone wants to know about is events. So we, we have a working document, we've published a calendar of events. You may have heard that Celebrate South Orange has retired for 2013. We have a new event called Guttenfest, or shortened to G-Fest, which is a vintage BMW car show. And it's with a South Orange resident who has been hosting this for about three years in town over on Valley. He's got a great turnout, it's one of these organic things that has just evolved and it's gotten so big that he has now asked us to support this event and we think it would be a really fun event and would do really well here in town. Downtown After Sundown is something that everyone would like to see come back, enormous interest, lots of performers have contacted us, a lot of the merchants would like to see it come back. As you know Downtown After Sundown has run for 20 weeks between June and October and it's four bands every weekend at two different locations. The difficult thing for 2013 is we've had a little bit of trouble finding sponsorship for Downtown After Sundown. But we would like to, obviously we would like to have it. The police chief called us today and asked us if there's any chance we could start it even earlier, it's been started in previous years over Memorial Day weekend. So we'd like to get it started and we hope that the funding would come, we just need a little bit more funding, a little bit more time to try to get the sponsorship together. The farmer's market, all the farmers from last year are interested in returning for 2013. We also have some new vendors and some new people that would like to become part of our market. We reached out to the Parking Authority who are double-checking with the Parking Authority Board to see if it might be possible for us to start the market either Wednesday, June 5th or Wednesday, June 12th.
Good morning, everybody. That Public Works is collecting leaf and lawn and garden ratings on April 1st. You can take things. Please place them in biodegradable bags or small branches that are less than four inches can be basically bundled up and put at the curb. Please try not to put them actually in the street. If you can just kind of balance them or put them right between the sidewalk and the curb, that would be best. The 36th Annual Interfaith Holocaust Remembrance Service will be held Sunday, April 14th. The March of Remembrance begins at 3:15 PM in Grove Park here in South Orange, and those assembled will proceed to Jubilee Hall at Seton Hall University for the service, which begins at 4:00 PM. Anybody that is coming for the service can bring donations of non-perishable food and paper products for the Food Bank of New Jersey. South Orange River Day will take place Sunday, May 5th from 11:00 AM until 4:00 PM down at the Duck Pond. This is one of our most fun and productive community gatherings. It's organized by the South Orange Environmental Commission to help clean up the Roway River and promote environmental awareness in town. There's going to be live music, an ecology walk, soccer clinic, and a lot more. So if you're interested in that, to learn a little bit more, you can visit soriverday.org. Another reminder that there is a municipal election, which will be held here Tuesday, May 14th, for three village trustee positions to serve four-year terms. The polls are open 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM on the 14th. The deadline to register to vote in this municipal election is April 23rd, and the deadline to apply for an application to vote by mail is May 7th. For more information, you can contact our clerk at clerk@southorange.org or call 973-378-7715, extension 1. Tonight, we have Lisa Hackett and Matt Glass from the South Orange Village Center Alliance, who are going to present first quarter update from the South Orange Village Center Alliance.
I'm Matt Glass. I'm the board chair of the South Orange Village Center Alliance. We came to you last time with our proposed budget for 2013, which you so graciously approved, and a lot has happened since then. So tonight, Lisa and I are here to tell you about our first quarter progress. I think I've said to most of you that the most important thing we did in fourth quarter 2012 slash first quarter 2013 was hiring Lisa Hackett. She's been here, how many weeks? Twelve weeks now, and she's been completely enmeshed in this community. And is really, one of the things we're trying to do is try to best manage her time because she's got so much to do. So she's going to take you through what we've been up to for the last three months. I want to pause one second for those trustees who are departing the board, and thank you for helping us get the improvement district launched. And a special thank you to trustee Gould, who serves on our board and has done an amazing job, even filling in when, before Lisa had begun. So we appreciate all the confidence you've all put into us, and Nancy will miss you very, very much when you become a citizen again.
[applause]
So it's my pleasure to introduce the not-so-new-anymore executive director of the South Orange Village Center Alliance, Lisa Hackett.
Thank you very much, Matt. President Torby, Board of Trustees, Mr. Lewis, Mr. Rother, Robin Chanel, thank you for having me tonight. It's been, as Matt said, the past 12 weeks have just been a whirlwind, but I really think that 2013 is really South Orange's year. I really do. And we have a lot to tell you about today. I'll try and make it quick. For first quarter, one of our strongest committees is really our business recruitment and retention team. We have had the best turnout, the best volunteerism at these meetings. We meet in the morning and we meet at night. Some of the initiatives that we're launching in 2013 are updating the Doing Business in South Orange packet to recruit new businesses into town. The last time this was updated was in about 2008, and we have a lot of folks working on that, so that'll be coming up soon. We've been scheduling business owner breakfasts every month. We've had great turnout, great participation for those. We're meeting with Sal Vrenda and Tony Grentse to go over the code and the ordinances in town to help continue to make South Orange a business-friendly community. We prepared a letter to go to homeowners that have come to South Orange within the past three years. That mailing is probably going to go out this week. Many of you have been invited. We have about five ribbon cuttings scheduled for Saturday, April 27th, in town, five new businesses, and possibly more, which is great. The Gateway, Eda Usos Building, the groundbreaking is Tuesday, May 7th, 9:00 AM.
Is that the BIFIS location?
It is the BIFIS location, yes. And we would love for you all to come, as well as members of the community. It's very exciting, 10 years in the making. And our efforts continue on the blockbuster space. We've been actively recruiting possible tenants, merchants from some surrounding towns that have been looking to open a second business have been coming through. We just need a little bit more time on that space. We have an inventory and an audit of all available space within the CID footprint for the first and second floors. That's taking place. We have a team of volunteers that are going out on Tuesday, April 16th. They're going to document all the available space, and we'll have a great inventory that will be published on our website, it'll be available in our office, and that'll really help the business recruitment effort. We have had a fair amount of businesses coming through, looking for space in South Orange, which has been great. Also, in first quarter, I'm sure you've noticed, we've got a lot of positive feedback regarding the maintenance in downtown, the overall cleanup. We have two part-time workers, Cornell and Asher, that are here six days a week. Cornell works from 6:00 to 10:00, Asher works from 10:00 to 2:00. They have done everything from return shopping carts to contact Department of Public Works when a mattress or a broken chair ends up dropped at the train trestle, and just general cleanup. We had a spill on South Orange Avenue of wine bottles and beer bottles. That got cleaned up. Everything gets taken care of almost instantaneously. Definitely same day, definitely within four hours of when we see something out there in the footprint. It's been working, I think, really well. They have uniforms, they have hats. They've already been contacted from a number of people about their hats, wanting to know where they can buy their hats, which is just great. It's a tribute to the new logo that we have. Their uniforms have been ordered. So if anyone sees things in town that aren't appropriate or things that need to be cleaned up, we've had people contact us about phone books that have been sitting out in the rain too long, that are sprawled all over the street, all kinds of different things, and we've taken care of them right away.
We only have six hats, so we have to purchase more. We'll get there.
Events. So what everyone wants to know about is events. So we have a working document. We've published a calendar of events. You may have heard that Celebrate South Orange has retired for 2013. We have a new event called Guttenfest, or shortened to G-Fest, which is a vintage BMW car show. And it's with a South Orange resident who has been hosting this for about three years in town, over on Valley. He's got a great turnout. It's one of these organic things that has just evolved, and it's gotten so big that he has now asked us to support this event, and we think it would be a really fun event and would do really well here in town. Downtown After Sundown is something that everyone would like to see come back, enormous interest, lots of performers have contacted us. A lot of the merchants would like to see it come back. As you know, Downtown After Sundown has run for 20 weeks between June and October, and it's four bands every weekend at two different locations. The difficult thing for 2013 is we've had a little bit of trouble finding sponsorship for Downtown After Sundown. But we would like to, obviously, we would like to have it. The police chief called us today and asked us if there's any chance we could start it even earlier. It's been started in previous years over Memorial Day weekend. So we'd like to get it started, and we hope that the funding would come. We just need a little bit more funding, a little bit more time to try to get the sponsorship together. The farmer's market, all the farmers from last year are interested in returning for 2013. We also have some new vendors and some new people that would like to become part of our market. We reached out to the Parking Authority, who are double-checking with the Parking Authority Board to see if it might be possible for us to start the market either Wednesday, June 5th, or Wednesday, June 12th. I think it would be great if we could start it earlier, if that works out. And hopefully, this year, we'll add a few more vendors to the market, which would be great. We renewed the membership with New Jersey Fresh. South Orange had let its membership in New Jersey Fresh lapse, so we renewed that membership. It's a great thing to support. New Jersey farmers have only New Jersey produce, locally grown produce. There's a lot of organic produce that's going to be coming to the South Orange market. And we, based on a grant in 2012, we now have the technology to accept SNAP payments at the market, so we can invite Cory Booker over. I'm only kidding. You know he did that big SNAP promotion. So, marketing, our website. Our website has gotten some pretty good traffic. We've had 2,667 visits since January 8th. We've had 1763 unique visits, and we get four to five page views per visit, which is great for a brand-new website. We are active on Facebook, and we have been posting general information, information about individual merchants. We're adding new friends every day. So if you haven't liked our Facebook page, please like us, we'll like you back. Today, we met with the Star Ledger. We have a concept that we're talking to SOPAC, Seton Hall, and the Baird Center about possibly doing a one-page advertorial in May called Destination South Orange. Because as Alex mentioned in the beginning, we have EMS Day in May, we have EMS Week, we have the river cleanup, we've got the Artist Studio Tour, possibly Guttenfest, we have the Downtown After Sundown concerts, we have a lot of things happening in May. And the last thing in terms of marketing is, I attended the Main Street New Jersey Summit in Hamilton, New Jersey, back in February, which is where all of my counterparts from across the state of New Jersey come together in one location to share best practices and such. And it was a really, it was a really good day. It was a really worthwhile trip. Design and beautification, the fronts grant program that was established previously in 2013, it will focus on lighting. It's been determined that lighting is something that everyone would like to see more of in 2013. So we're working with some of the merchants in areas in town that need more lighting, and they can apply for the matching grant. The New Jersey Train Trestle renovation, I'm sure everyone's aware that a grant was written in 2012. We expect to hear about that grant late spring, is what I was told. We have a tentative date on the calendar for New Jersey Transit to come out and do a walkthrough with us. If you've seen the train trestle, you can tell that it sustained some distress from the hurricane, and we've had extreme weather conditions in North Jersey, and some of the concrete is falling and such, so we're hoping to get that renovation underway. They're going to come out and do that walkthrough on April 23rd, tentative. I can let anyone know that's interested. We've been participating in design consultations with individual merchants. Gridiron Waffle Shop might be considering opening the back area of the waffle shop, which has a really nice patio and such. Pandang, we've been talking to them about lighting. There's some ivy that grows up the side of their building that we might want to trim or do something about that. Full of Laffle Yours is a brand-new restaurant. It's at the entrance of SOPAC, right on South Orange Avenue. We've been talking to them about their signage, about their awnings, about their facade, about utilizing their windows for seating. Town Hall Deli, you know that they moved from Valley Street, just around the corner. We visited Tony at his new location the other day. He says he's about three weeks away from opening. You'll all be able to get your sloppy joes again soon. TJ's Shoes is doing really well as a new business. He's strong, he's doing well, he's got his signage up, he got a new roof recently.
Hold on one second. All right, just hold on one second. I've got some technical difficulties back there.
It's hot under here. No, I can't sing, unfortunately.
It's too hot in the field.
It's too hot for me.
It's too hot in the field.
It's too hot for me.
It's too hot in the field.
It's too hot for me.
It's too hot in the field.
It's too hot for me.
It's too hot in the field.
It's too hot for me.
It's too hot in the field.
It's too hot for me.
It's too hot in the field.
It's too hot for me.
It's too hot in the field.
It's too hot for me.
It's too hot in the field.
It's too hot for me.
It's too hot in the field.
It's too hot for me.
All right, I think we're back on. Game bases, everybody. All right, so please continue. A little technical interruption, those that are watching at home, but...
So, next up on the list is the, you know, the spring planting, which typically happens somewhere around Mother's Day weekend. You know, the planters in town, the hanging baskets in town, we've had some 105 temperatures the past couple summers, and it's really a challenge to keep these plants alive due to the watering. So we have come up with a plan. We've identified some drought-resistant plants, and we've come up with a strategy around the watering, and we have some new containers and liners. So we're hopeful that this will help keep these plants alive and thriving. And they're very colorful, and I think people would really like them. Sam Joseph really worked hard on identifying which plants would work best. And here we go, back to Downtown After Sundown.
So I want to mention two things real quick. One is, I want to thank our board members who have come here tonight to support us, and we have had incredible support. We have some new volunteers in the fold, but it's not enough. We need more people. So you can go to sovillagecenter.org. We have a business recruitment and retention team, we have a beautification team, a design team, an events team, a marketing team, and it's all run by residents, it's all volunteers, and we'd love to have some more support. So let's talk about Downtown After Sundown. It was started, I'm trying to think, it was three or four years ago, and it's been a great success, but it does cost money. So what you see on the screen right now is the flyer that we created that Lisa got out to some local businesses we thought would be interested in sponsoring. There is not interest at this time, and I think we will do a better job, can and will do a better job of helping promote our sponsors. But the question before was, how much does it cost? So we were looking for one $15,000 sponsorship as an exclusive presenting sponsor, or three $5,000 sponsors. That will get us through the amount of time we want to get through. You know, we pay a very, very small amount to the bands who play, and several of them have said they play for free. We pay for manager, and then the rest is done for marketing and support. So it is a lot of bands. As Lisa said, it's about 70 different concerts over the course of the summer. So what we're asking tonight is, because we're running out of time to book these bands, book a manager, and get started, is for the village to help us fund this. We will not stop looking for sponsors, and as has done in the past, any sponsorship money that comes in will be directed right back, but we are looking at $15,000 as a total to do the whole season.
$15,000 for how many events, for how many separate performances?
For the whole season.
It's between 70 and 80 separate concerts. So there's Sloan Street on the corner, and it's...
So it's the minimum per performance?
Yeah, it's not very much.
And if I can add, I mean, the Downtown After Sundown, I mean, it's been successful in a couple of different ways. I mean, it's kind of an important part of, I think, what the village is trying to do to keep the downtown vibrant, get people down to the downtown, and actually be there over the summer. And just so for, I think it's amazing, as Mr. Rother said, as you guys have said, 15, one $5,000 sponsors, 70 to 80 concerts in our downtown over the summer. That's an amazing opportunity for anybody that's interested to be able to provide that much to our community. And whatever we can do to thank those sponsors, you know, we should certainly do, but it really is an amazing opportunity.
And I can say, compared to last year, we have a, the brand-new website, we have a much more robust social media, we're prepared to help market... We're prepared to help market this better, and we will do a better job of making sure that sponsors are recognized. And it also includes being able to put a table in Spito Park, and, you know, promote your business. There's lots of ways. But, I think the biggest thing is that everyone in town is going to appreciate whomever steps up to do this, more than even the promotional value. It's going to be the community-minded value.
And I think you hit the nail on the head, is that perhaps the people who sponsored before didn't really see the return on investment as far as visibility and name recognition tied to the event. And you recognize that, and going forward, we just need to get through this year, and, you know, to have someone step up to the plate.
So, you did mention the funding for the Village part, and that we can maybe talk about it a little bit later, if people are okay with adding that to the agenda for discussion at the end of the meeting.
Yes.
And we can get back to you, obviously, you don't need to answer it right now, I assume, but we certainly don't want to get in the way of defining a sponsor.
You can use your microphone.
But, we can certainly discuss the potential for the Village funding it at the end of the meeting.
Any other questions about anything about first quarter?
I do have one quick question about, like, outdoor seating in the downtown. Is there anything that you guys can do, that we can do, to encourage business owners that are near places with outdoor seating to put things outside? I mean, what's the, just, you know, is there a particular time that, you know, you guys, that everybody starts doing that, or is it just like when the weather gets warm, like today? I mean, is there anything we can do to encourage that?
You mean, if a merchant, for instance, is a restaurant, to do outdoor seating?
Yeah.
I mean, I think if it's physically able, I would love for merchants to do it. I know that now Batagra South, but formerly Rugla, started setting up some tables on South Orange Avenue. I'm not sure how well they did. But certainly, I know that Stonies and their outdoor patio does extremely well. So, I think it's a benefit if the Village is looking for people, more people to do that, and we can help with the permitting process and make sure that it happens.
Right. That's what I was going to say, is there's obviously a permit process, and there's, I think, a small fee associated with having to put those outside. But, is there any way, is it easy for the Village Center lines, for somebody to reach out to the businesses that are nearby those spaces and just say, hey, by the way, if you need any help with this, let us know. We want you guys to be successful this summer. The weather's warming up. You know, let us know if you need help with the permits.
Lisa, you may want to add this to your list of, when you're doing the ordinances to review for more business-friendly, you want to add this to the list. I did a push a couple of years ago, made the rounds to the businesses, exactly what Alex is talking about. And a number of the businesses liked the idea, but were concerned they would have to store their tables, and didn't have room to store their tables. There were, you know, some of the places, it was just difficult for them. So, I think there's interest, but the logistics were somewhat of a challenge. So, I agree completely. I think it's a huge opportunity lost for businesses that don't do it. It totally makes the downtown more vibrant, but some businesses had some serious concerns. We could talk, you know, talk about that, and I could direct you to some of them specifically.
Okay, sure. Yeah, I'm happy to follow up with them on that.
Yeah, thanks.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay. All right, thank you for the presentation.
Thanks.
And all the work that you guys have done. Okay, before we get into any business this evening, I do want to open the meeting up for public comments. So, maybe someone could just check if there's anybody that's filled out the sheet back there.
Logan Williams is the only one on the list.
Logan Williams?
That's me.
Okay. Yep, just come up to the podium and just state your name and address, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Logan Williams, and I'm a first-year student at Seen Hall University, and I live on 173 South Orange Avenue with my brother in the Brookland Apartments. And I'm sorry if I don't have, like, a formal presentation prepared. I just heard of this an hour ago. But, I would like to propose a project to your community that I feel could have tremendous positive impact, and that would be building a skate park. And I know when I mentioned that, probably two big things come to your mind, is funding and liability. Liability, I'm sure that's something that could be worked around, because you guys would not be the first, by a long shot, to develop a skate park. As you can see, there's plenty that exist in New Jersey. And as for funding, I've seen much less affluent communities than the ones you guys have build skate parks. So, I know, like, that's something we can do. I'd be willing, like, if you were to be interested in this, I could help fundraise. I know there's a big skateboarding community pushing to have a skate park built here in this area. I know for a fact, in Maplewood Skate Park, that's a very crummy skate park, if you ask me as a skateboarder's opinion, is poorly funded, the ramps are in poor condition now, and their community has been promising to build a new skate park for years, and each year they've been disappointing the local skateboarding community. I know for a fact that if you guys were to show somewhat of an interest, I could get tons of skateboarders to sign a petition. I could probably get 100 names overnight to sign down and say, like, we're on board with this. And when I moved to this area, the greatest potential I saw in your town is I feel it's a great, young people, like, a young town, kind of like Hoboken. That's how I felt about it. I feel like if you were to draw on a younger crowd of people to move in, you know, like, younger, starting families with, like, kids, because there's, like, a lot of apartments and, like, townhouses that they can move into. It's a very walkable town. I feel like a skate park would really reach out to, like, the younger community that's in this area, not just this area, but the surrounding New York City, kind of, or, you know, like, outer suburbs and whatnot. And from the town I'm from, they built, a skate park was completed by the time I was around 13 or 14, and that was huge in my upbringing. All my best friends are from there. It was a healthy, like, safe environment for the kids who, like, you know, don't necessarily want to play soccer, or football, or baseball, and the kids who might not fit in with everyone else. A good, healthy environment for them to be with kids like themselves, and get some exercise and make some friends. And if you guys were interested, I'd love to work with you guys and help facilitate this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? You said where you're from, you had one, what town was that?
Oh, sorry, I might have skipped over. I'm from West Windsor, New Jersey. That's Mercer County. And they built a skate park, and that, like, it brought, I could tell you, opening day, like, there's radio stations, like, hundreds of kids were there. And like, this was five years ago, and today it's still frequently used. Kids from different towns come over all the time, meet each other. It brings, like, the town together.
Do you have any idea what it cost, how much they spent on it?
I'm not sure exactly. I was very young when it got built. But, like, there's tons of skate parks all throughout New Jersey, and I feel like we could get, like, fundraising, or I don't know, I'm hopeful from this.
The issue has never been about the cost. The issue's been about the location. We actually, the issue's always been about location, where we put a skate park, not so much about the funding, though, because we had a group that came forth when Maplewood did it, to do one on a joint basis, but we couldn't agree on a location that wouldn't interfere with local residents, who were afraid of the noise at night, or whatever it was. And one location that had been identified was using a couple of the tennis courts by the swimming pool. We could repurpose those two tennis courts, but tennis players were not exactly thrilled with that idea. But, it was one idea that we came about, but now you're going to have a building going up there, and those people probably don't.
By the Baird.
What?
Slight space by the Baird.
So, I think what we could do, I mean, thank you for coming in, and especially the Seen Hall student coming down to the meeting. I think what we could definitely do, if you leave your email address or phone number with the clerk here, a couple of us can get back to you, whether it's from the administration or from the recreation committee. You know, there's, like, as Trustee Rosner was kind of alluding to, there's been discussions about these in the past, and I think we'd be happy to sit down and, you know, hear your ideas, tell you a little bit about the history of what we've tried to do here, and talk about that with you.
And I would like to add something for him, a to-do for you. I would suggest that you do some research, find out how much that park costs, and since you're lobbying for this, and you're a student, I'd like to share with you that you can be a little more prepared to be effective in your lobbying, so come up with the cost.
I plan to come back.
And some of the challenges it took, and, you know, how many people participate, and all that other stuff, if you want, you know, to lobby this legislative body effectively. And then perhaps join, come to a recreation meeting, because this fits right in with that committee, and present your findings to the recreation committee, and the recreation committee can report back out to us.
My primary goal of tonight was to see if you guys were interested, and I'm more than willing to do my homework and come back, and I believe you guys meet again on the 22nd. Is that correct?
Yes.
I would be willing to come back and give you guys some numbers, and give you guys some idea of, like, how you could potentially do this.
But the place to do that is recreation.
You know, the best way to follow up on this would be, you know, an individual meeting, where we can kind of get into a more conversation about it.
Which would be the recreation committee, which is.
Okay, so I'll leave my name.
So, if you leave your contact information, we'll get back to you about the best way to follow up. We can definitely have a conversation.
We did have, we had a group come about eight months, I think it was eight months ago, to the rec committee. I don't know if Mark, if you were at that meeting or not. It's actually a group of elementary school kids that came, and they had a petition signed. And we told them to go back, you know, get your parents involved, and come back to us if you still have interest in. They never came back. So, if you come to a rec committee meeting, and you have a lot of people who are interested, and you have some information, I'm sure we'd be happy to talk to you about that.
Okay, thank you, guys. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there anybody else who wishes to speak at this time? Okay, I'd like to close public comments and move on to our ordinances. We have, I believe, one on first reading tonight.
Thank you. We have ordinance 2013-05. This is an ordinance of the town of South Orange Village, County of Essex, approving the application and financial agreement for tax exemption for an urban renewal project with respect to a portion of the Central Business District redevelopment area located on block 2304, lots 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9.
Thank you. This is a long-term, a tax exemption, or otherwise kind of generally known as a pilot for Third and Valley. Mr. Lewis, is there anything more you want to say about that?
Well, I mean, generally, it's an introduction. The memo that our redevelopment council prepares to summarize the terms, I wouldn't know, Mr. Baumann, our redevelopment council is here, as well as a gentleman from Jonathan Rose. They were willing to show up in case there were questions, recognizing this is not a public hearing, but to the extent anyone on the board had any questions, they're already.
I think we should come forward.
Okay, so at this time, I'd like to open it up for any questions or comments from any members of the board.
Just want to make a couple of comments. One was that, when we were interviewing, going back a year, a year and a half ago, we met with four developers who were the finalists, and the question of pilot came up more than once from all four developers. All four of whom said that it would probably be, have great impact negatively on the finances of the project in terms of what they'd be able to do in terms of the parking deck versus the rescue squad relocation, and all four of them were pretty insistent that a pilot would be necessary for the project to work for the way the board had set off the parameters of how we wanted that project to look in terms of number of parking spaces, and in terms of the rescue squad. So, that was one of the issues and challenges that we had. It wasn't that, you know, any one of them said, nah, we don't need a pilot, but there's issues like affordable housing, there's issues with the property itself, whatever other issues there were in terms of the rescue squad and the parking deck. And that's one of the reasons why we had to get into position where we were going to negotiate a pilot. Of course, my perspective is that pilot is usually, because we share a school system with Maplewood, it can be advantageous to the Village to have a pilot on the project the way the finances work, because we're getting far more than double what we would have gotten normally, and the rest of the portion that's made up by the taxpayers, which the largest part is the schools, 60% of that, or almost 60%, is now shifted to Maplewood and their residents. And vice versa, when they do a pilot, we have the same impact, we're picking up 42%. So, it's not a negative impact, it's actually a positive, maybe small, but we've done a flow chart before, Excel spreadsheet before on it. Every time we do a pilot, there's a slight advantage to the residents in the town. But, in this case, a pilot became sort of imperative based on the negotiations and discussions that we had going way back.
Just want to pass that on. I have a couple of comments or concerns, both on process and on principle. With respect to process, you know, I don't know how this got on the agenda in the first place. I didn't, you know, I was under the impression our rule was, no, nothing gets put on the agenda without filling out a request form. In fact, I had requested an ordinance beyond for discussion this evening, was told I need to submit a request form, even though all background was provided. So, on process, I don't understand how this got on there. Secondly, with respect to process, we also had talked about previously that we would never just put an ordinance for a vote without having discussed it first. And again, the first time we saw this was in our email this past Wednesday. So, I'm surprised this has been fast-tracked so quickly. And kind of the corollary on the principle of all this, this project hasn't even been approved by the planning board yet, or frankly, hasn't even gone before the planning board yet. We don't know what changes, if any, the planning board's going to make, more, you know, higher density, lower density. I mean, obviously, it's pretty likely they're going to approve the project, but we don't know that for certain. And it just seems odd that we're approving financial terms of a project that hasn't been, the project itself hasn't been approved yet. So, I think this is, in my opinion, premature. I know, for example, the most recent site, the, what we're calling the Gateway, the former BIFAS site, we did the financial agreement after the project was approved, not terribly long ago, just a couple of months ago. Along the same lines, this talks about kind of the pro forma and the contribution to the rescue squad, but we still don't even know what the location of the rescue squad is going to be. So, again, we're making deals, or we're making a deal on terms that are just unknowns.
Actually, those terms are known, the rescue squad.
I'm sorry, Mark?
The terms are known to us, it's not the locations are known.
The location's an unknown, right?
But, the terms are known.
Well, we know the dollar amount, it's in the document, but I mean.
They could care less about the location.
But, once, but the location, I'm making this up, you know. Say we find a location that's going to require blasting, I'm making that up, hypothetical example. It's going to cost more, for example. We just don't know, and until that, you know, I just think we're putting the cart before the horse. And lastly, to your point, Mark, a number, it was quite a number of years ago, you're absolutely right, a presentation was done about the impact. I'm not necessarily opposed to a pilot in concept, but I think we need to have, we should have that discussion, a public vetting, a public disclosure, a discussion of what the full taxes would be on this, what the pilot taxes would be. Have a presentation before we just jump the gun here, and so the residents can understand and be informed. Again, I'm not disagreeing. I think it was done a number of years ago, and it was valuable information. But, that was a long, that was, if I remember, I just saw the Gaslight Commons Project, which was well over 10, well over 10 years ago.
I think it was for the, it wasn't for the Gaslight Commons, but it did the Pro Data one.
But, anyway, it's been quite a number of years. And I, you know, there's a lot of new staff here that wasn't part of that. I think doing, going through that due diligence, I think, would make a lot of sense before we do this. Again, I'm not necessarily opposed to this, I just think it's really premature, and I think we should do that due diligence first. And I would, I would request, and frankly, move that we table this until those things occur.
Mr. Baumann, with your extensive experience in this field, could you perhaps comment on some of the processes here, like, for example, the financial agreement versus approval for the planning board, things like that, and ensure that Trustee Goldberg is brought up?
So, first, sort of, the BIFAS model was kind of backwards, to be perfectly frank. We came to the council after you already had your site plan approval, but typically, the process that we would expect in a redevelopment process would be the adoption of the redevelopment plan, which you've already concluded, followed by the negotiation of the financial agreement and redevelopment agreement, and then subsequently to that would be the site plan application. The expectation is that the redevelopment plan was so specific that their site plan application should be consistent with that plan, and should be an as-of-right application, generally speaking. But, in terms of why you have the financial agreement today, the financial agreement's done by ordinance, the redevelopment agreement's done by resolution, so we were hoping that you would consider introducing the financial agreement ordinance tonight, and then at the next meeting, we will be presenting you both the redevelopment agreement, and then considering this for adoption, so that they would all sort of come together on the same night. So, the purpose of having the financial agreement tonight was really just so that we could have the public hearing and discussion on the financial agreement at the same time as the redevelopment agreement, which would recur at your next meeting. So, tonight was just to get this in play as an introduction, but at our next meeting would be the sort of the full-blown presentation, as you describe it, of, by then we will have to know what the rescue squad is, where it's going to be, what's it going to cost. We're going to lay through all the numbers, because some of the information's in the financial agreement, but a lot of it, as you described, is not in the financial, it's in the redevelopment agreement. For example, the affordable housing contribution, how many units, where it's going to be, the, how we're dealing with the land, what the garage is going to look like. So, there's a lot of details that will be in that. So, we do expect a full-blown, hearty discussion, presentation, discussion, question, answers, all sort of designed to tee up at the same time as the redevelopment agreement. So, that's really why you had this party today. It wasn't, it was sort of just to get this rolling, so that we can have our big discussion on all both agreements at the same time.
Mr. Baumann, I've been asking a particular question for a few weeks now. Are you going to have that answer before the next meeting?
Yeah, so, I've talked to Mr. Lewis about it briefly. I have, his initial response was, he took. I have, his initial response was, he took, and then I spoke to these gentlemen as well. The question is, I'm sorry. The amount of, in the redevelopment plan, it says that the property line to the parked garage, the distance is 15 feet. There was originally a discussion about having to be 20 feet. It was ultimately settled on 15 feet. Trustee Bauer expressed a concern that our expectation was that there would be a possibility for a bike path there at some point. And I'm speaking for you, so you can correct me if I'm wrong. And that there should be room between the end of the parking garage and where the end of the embankment ends, as opposed to where the property line ends. The embankment comes into the property line. So the issue is how much space is there really between where the parked garage would be and the embankment ends? And that's the question you want answered, and that's what we're working on. I don't have the exact answer to that yet. I think Mr. Lewis had done some analysis that says it might be eight or nine feet. But at this point, we don't know for sure. So we will have the answer to that question. But what I do know is the redevelopment plan talks about the distance between the garage and the property line. And I remember discussions revolving around whether we had to deal with a fire truck trying to get in in case there was a fire. We vetted that issue through the police department, the fire department. They just determined it wasn't an issue because it was a garage. But the plan definitely talks about property line as opposed to the embankment. And it may be that it could be seven or eight feet, but I'll know for sure by the time we have our meeting.
Okay, that's not enough. Federal highway is 10-foot minimum for any kind of bike path. So that's going to be a problem for me.
I understand. Yeah, you're clear with that on your voicemail. I mean, what I understand about the bike path is it does, just probably run into a piece of private property. You can't continue any-
Yeah, I know that, but that's not what our plan is, so.
Our river plan calls for a bike path on the other side where we have the Borderlands Park, where the bike path is. So I'm not quite sure where the bike path is here for.
The path is, well, I don't want to get into the whole thing now, but we negotiated from 20 feet down to 15 feet. 20 feet was when the four developers that you described submitted bids. Ultimately, there were two. 20 feet was agreed to. And at the developer's request, we went down to 15 feet. The discussion was very clear that we wanted to have, because obviously development is going to continue down Valley Street, we want to have a way for people to access all the way down to, you know, Memorial Park or Lackey Wanda Place or something like that, so that it's a straight shot to the train station. I think it's going to be very valuable space and pathway and not having to go out to Valley Street, which is ugly and has utilities all through the sidewalk and everything, which nobody's volunteering to bury the utilities. Seven or eight feet is just not going to be enough.
Yeah, I know.
I know how many spaces you have. This is very specific for how many units you have and how many spaces you have in the garage. Something's going to have to give.
Well, there's also clearly would be, there would be an engineering solution. Because we know the proper, an engineering solution would be, you cut into the embankment and you build a retention wall.
Okay, that's fine, because that's what there is now.
So we have, so we have to solve the problem. I'm not saying there's clearly an engineering solution. How that would cost or how we work through that is the other question. But we definitely have a property line that is determined to be 15 feet. Now we have to deal with the embankment coming into the property.
Okay.
Well, this is the first time I'm hearing about a bicycle path along that property line.
We had a very long discussion about it at the, I think at both closed sessions where we agreed to go down to 15 feet, both before and after the planning board. And we certainly discussed it with the planning board. So this has been discussed in open session and closed session, with me at least, three times.
Yeah, we were all at closed session. I don't recall a specific conversation. But I got your email and I want to solve it for you. So I'm, you know, whether, when it came up or not, it's not really as important to me as making sure all the trustees are satisfied.
Appreciate that. Otherwise, I don't have any problem with this ordinance.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments at this time? Okay, thank you, Mr. Baumann. Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
Moved by Trustee Bauer.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Levinson. We have the roll, please.
Thank you. Trustee Bauer? Yes. Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Goldberg?
No.
Trustee Gould?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2013-05 has passed upon introduction and first reading.
I move that Ordinance 2013-05 be set down for second reading and final passage at the April 22nd, 2013, meeting of the Board of Trustees, and that a public hearing be held at that time and that the village clerk be authorized to take the necessary action regarding public notice of such meeting.
Motion by Trustee Davis Ford.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Rosner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Barry, can you see if you can find that old Excel spreadsheet that Mr. Gross put together on the pilots and just, you know, update it for the numbers that reflect here so we can have it?
I did my own spreadsheet sheet, please.
Okay, thank you. You know, one of the other points that Mark was saying before about items going, a pilot and the assessment relative to South Orange and Maplewood. This current property is not in the, on the assessments currently. It will become a property on the assessment and will be included as part of the total assessment between the two municipalities.
And then subtract it out if there's a-
And subtract it out. So it has a benefit to us.
Thank you.
A double benefit.
So we do have a resolution as well for tonight.
Yes, thank you. We have Resolution 2013-71. This is a resolution delegating authority to the Township of South Orange Village Purchasing Agent to award a contract for natural gas supply.
Thank you. Trustee Levinson, is this your-
Yes.
Okay, could you explain this briefly to members of the public?
This will allow us to issue a, or a B, I think it's called, to bid for gas pricing, either on a one-year or a two-year pricing basis. This is going to a third-party consortium or creating a consortium for ourselves. Hopefully, we'll reduce the price of, or the cost of gas to us.
And this is something that we did a pretty similar thing very recently for our electricity.
Well, we participated in a consortium that did go out and bid. And actually, we're doing it again this year with Essex County, Essex and Hudson County.
And to add to Trustee Levinson's point, there was a consortium on electric. There were enough municipalities, everybody used electric. Most municipalities do not have the gas demand that we have. And thus, there's not enough interest in creating a consortium. But in speaking with the utility consultant, he indicated our demand was sufficient that we could benefit by going out to bid just on our own consumption. And the nature of this process, and I don't profess to be an expert, is that they have certain, like, strike prices, then they go to the auction, and it's a very fast pace, and you have to commit within a certain period of time. And it doesn't lend itself to our timeframe for meeting. So it's not like we can get the bid, then wait, and then make the award. And so the way these are done is you authorize a purchasing agent under very specific conditions. Notably, it's got to be at least 10% less than what we're currently paying. Because the timing of when you have to accept because of BPU and rate setting and everything else, that's why it's almost like an advanced authority, but it's under those conditions. It's got to at least say 10%.
We participate in something like this on, at a county level. The same, the process is similar. We're a member of a group of municipalities. And the resolution's passed to give whoever has the authorization to accept a bid because of the same circumstances just described. We already participate in something like this similar.
Well, what's nice about it is that we do have a large consumption of gas because of the gas lamps. But it's characteristic is it runs 24 hours, seven days a week. And it's the most ideal type of gas consumption to bid on because we don't have the fluctuations of both the winter and summer seasonal fluctuations, which would cause some problems with distributors of gas.
What's the timing of this, Howard? When does this bid go out, when we get the results, and when will we find out?
Barry has the-
Well, the deadline for the bids to be in is by April 25th. And I think it has to be awarded, it's within, by the end of April under the BPU. It's like a very fast term.
Right.
And again, I would point out, our annual natural gas consumption bills are in excess of $600,000. We talk about 10% savings. It's real money. It's $60,000 a month.
Why is, why are the street, like, in a different bid group than the municipal account?
They have different-
They have an SLG. They're a separate tariff.
Oh, but that, okay, so just because it's a different tariff that that requires a different bid group?
No, we would like to have a different bid group because that is a flat, a constant gas consumption, whereas the other ones fluctuate.
I get it. Okay.
And we did the same thing with electric.
Yep.
We have multiple bid groups.
Okay, if there's no more questions or comments, can I have a motion, please?
I move.
Okay, moved by Trustee Davis Ford, seconded by Trustee Rosner. Okay, can we have the roll, please?
Thank you. Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Goldberg?
Yes.
Trustee Gould?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson? Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Bauer?
Yes.
Thank you. So Resolution 2013-071 has been adopted.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
Move to a chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to call the conference agenda meeting to order with the same attendance that we just had.
Thank you. We'll do a roll call. Trustee Bauer?
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Here.
Trustee Goldberg?
Here.
Trustee Gould?
Here.
Trustee Levinson?
Here.
Trustee Rosner? President Torpey?
Here.
Thank you. Adequate notice of the conference agenda meeting has been provided to the press in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting was posted in Village Hall, on our website, and has been filed in the office of the village clerk. Official action may not be taken at tonight's conference agenda meeting.
Thank you. So I'm going to start off with my report. Mr. Lewis, I don't know if you have that website there ready? If not, I could, okay, do something else first. Okay, so the first thing that I want to talk about tonight, just really, really briefly, is just show the budget tool that we've talked about so much here. And Mr. Lewis is just going to take a couple clicks around. And basically, this tool allows anyone, any member of the public, to view our budget broken down by different lines. And it goes back to 2008. So when we adopt 2013 budget, that will be in there as well. And we'll have five years of budgets in this format. You can kind of see this, there's different views for the different lines. And you can look at the information based on a, you know, yearly basis, if you want to. You can get a table of the information. You can get a, so here's the table. If you want to look at it that way, you can look at a pie chart that breaks up the different expenditures by category. And this goes down for a couple of different levels of our budget. So anybody who's interested in where their money is going just puts it in a format that, aside from the budgets, and we should have got a PDF of the, of our adopted budget from a previous year, it's about a 70 or 80-page, you know, non-machine-readable PDF that is very difficult to follow. You can't really look at year-to-year information. You can go back a year, maybe. But it's a little confusing. This puts all the information, you know, right up there. And you can drill down, again, a couple of different levels down. You can download the information into your own spreadsheet if you want. You can share it on social media if you're interested in, you know, showing people anything that you find. And you can also contact us and give us your feedback about any of these, anything that you see here. So this is a tool that, as you can see, it's still in beta. So it's going to, there's always, there's going to be improvements that are going to be automatically built into this as they continue to develop the software. And we talked about the idea that in the future, there's going to be forecasting tools that may be implemented as part of this. But again, if anybody's familiar with looking at a municipal budget, the state PDFs, I mean, it is very, very hard to follow. It's very hard to connect the dots from year to year, department to department. And so, you know, we're pretty excited to be able to put this out there in this kind of a format for anybody to learn about where their money is going in South Orange. I think it's pretty safe to say there is no municipal government in New Jersey that has a budget that's this accessible. You know, this is a pretty incredibly easy to use. So we definitely encourage anyone who wants to check this out. You can go to southorange.orgopenbudget. And it'll redirect you to this page here. You can go on there. You can play around with it. And hopefully, this will allow people to understand a little bit better how the budget's set up and, you know, basically where your tax dollars in the municipal level are going. Hopefully, this is the kind of tool that more municipalities and school boards can adopt, more counties can use, and just get more members of the public that can find out, if they want to, where the money is going. And, you know, I think we do a very good job here in South Orange of being transparent, and it's been that way for many years, about where the money's going, how the money's being spent, giving citizens, residents, opportunities to get input into the process through the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee and others. But again, this is one more way that we can make this information available to people, which we're pretty excited about launching. And as we talked about last time, there are benefits to our, some of our internal budgeting as well, to be able to use a tool that's this easy. So go in there, southorange.orgopenbudget. We're going to be putting out some more information about it, which I'll email to some of the media that I know is here. But go around, play around with the numbers, take a look at it, and maybe learn a little bit more about our budget.
Yeah, one question I have is, some years, we actually switched places in a budget. I can't even think of a specific example, but we took something-
Engineering.
Engineering. That may have been, you know, in point A, and then it's a different section. Do we have any footnotes or summaries that will tell people about that? So we switched engineering from capital to operating is a perfect example. So it makes it look like the engineering budget took a big jump for no real reason, but it was the way it probably should have been budgeted all along. Or I think in DPW, when we actually outsourced for lawn cutting, there was a cut in certain services, but that was an increase in the outside contractor. It was still in that savings, but does it show anywhere in there? Or is that, this is something we can't?
It's something we might be able to do. We can follow up with them and see if we can identify some of the, you know, kind of a handful of most common things like that. I mean, that's a great suggestion to make sure to put that in there. So there's kind of a little asterisk or, you know, a tooltip that shows up that tells people the story behind.
At least going forward, I know it's much harder doing backwards. Going forward, though, we should be very conscious of this if we're going to have this kind of tool. We should be very conscious when we make a budgeting change or the administrator makes a budgeting line change from one department to another, or whatever it is, that we make the asterisks currently, so that at least going forward, we don't have that problem.
Yeah, that's a great suggestion. I mean, the idea is to try and educate people. So, you know, we're going to see if we can try and incorporate some of that into there. And if people do see something and they do have a question, say, "Well, this looks weird. This was, you know, cut from, you know, this much to zero in one year." You know, you can always, there's a little contact button up on the left side. You can always drop us an email and ask us. And we'll certainly explain anything to folks that we can.
How much did this cost us?
What did the final number come out to with the 30%? Yeah.
Annually or one-time deal?
It's annually. And that includes entering in all the data.
Can you see that on there? Can you drill down and find out how much this cost?
It's not in, we don't have 13 in there.
Yeah, we don't have 13, but you'll be able to drill down to, you know, admin OE lines, which is where this was, so.
Hey, can we figure out, like, how many people are going on and looking at it?
Yep, yep. Yeah, well, it's part of our, we have a redirect from our website. So at the very least, we can use our own analytics. And we assume we can ask them for a report after a couple of weeks or so and see how many people are looking at it. But anyway, so again, encourage people to go on, check it out. And, you know, and again, you can download all the information as well into that same spreadsheet, you know, kind of format that we released things into last year. So if you don't like this tool, but you just want the data, download it into a spreadsheet and, you know, do whatever you want with it. And hopefully, in the future, we can, you know, kind of build on these sort of things and provide a little bit more interactive function, which is something that they've talked about too, is while you see something, you know, you want to make a suggestion on a particular line, you know, including a feature to be able to, you know, make a suggestion to the village. And then when we sit down and have our budget workshops and for the administrator when compiling the budget, we can kind of aggregate all the, you know, ideas from people about what we can do. And that just expands the, you know, pool of people that might be interested and involved.
So again- The other point I would add, which isn't so much on the public transparency, but was attractive to me. Our current software, if you want to get historical data, I literally have to log in, go into the archive. I have to open 2011. I have to pull up that account. I got to print it. Then I got to go log back out, go back in, pull up 2010, print it. So the fact that they, you know, put it down, I can get a five-year look back on every single line item is, just saving time.
Yeah, and as we talked a little bit about last meeting, one of, you know, when we started talking about this with the vendor, the- Yeah, and as we talked a little bit about last meeting, one of, you know, when we started talking about this with the vendor, the direction that it took was that there's actually probably down the road, a cost savings in terms of the efficiency and time by the administrator and by department, is to be able to much, much more easily, you know, look up that sort of information, especially historical information. And ideally, if they incorporate a forecasting tool at some point, being able to actually do that, which would be really great too.
That would be very important to me, that it would incorporate a forecasting tool. What I would like to see eventually, you know, if not this year, next year, but really this year, that each department head, besides, you know, putting together their own budget, presenting it to the administrator, would also forecast what their expectations are as far as expenses and revenue needed for their particular department. We have incredible professionals working for the village, but we really need to set higher expectations and invest in their professional development, supporting this, you know, application.
Absolutely, and that, you know, I think everybody, you know, wanna look at not just the, you know, year that's right in front of you, but a couple years ahead and where we're going. It's very helpful to do. So again, you know, we should encourage people to check that out, you can email myself, Mr. Lewis, and if you have any questions about that, or you can just fill out the contact form on that tool. And I should mention that this, the vendor, Delphi Solutions, is based in California. And, you know, I was fortunate enough to meet the person who started that company, you know, as sort of an open government advocate on a panel together. And they gave South Orange a pretty good discount, about 30%, because, you know, they wanna break into New Jersey and wanna get their ideas out there. So, so again, you know, we're excited to work with them because we think there's a lot more cool features that are gonna come. You know, we're only the third or fourth town to do this. So a couple other things, I'll try and keep brief, just a real quick public information marketing committee update. I mentioned this last time, I believe, but there is an official South Orange Facebook page now, so I hope everybody up here has liked the page. Anybody who has Facebook, like the page. I will make sure to like the South Orange Village Center Alliance page from the South Orange Village page, but only if you guys do it back. And again, you know, it's an opportunity for us to provide more information in that, in that medium. And our new deputy village administrator, and that's gonna be one of his primary responsibilities, is managing the social media accounts, working with the Public Information Marketing Committee, I'm researching some of the policies, you know, for example, how to respond to comments that are put on the page, how to archive the information so that we're complying with the Open Public Records Act, all those sort of things that are total kind of gray areas right now for municipal governments using these tools. But again, go on, like the page, we already started talking about some of the really, I think, interesting and exciting things, pieces of information we're gonna be able to put out there, and now we have a staff person who's actually gonna be able to manage that, which is really great. And like I said, one of the other projects that the Public Information Marketing Committee is working on is researching some of the best practices and policies around these tools, and making sure that we are doing everything the right way. At the very least, keeping up with and ideally being ahead of the curve on some of the legal issues around using social media from a government. And the Public Information and Marketing Committee is also working on a handful of other projects, including looking at some of the branding and identity of the village. So, I mean, even down to, you know, putting a seal on our podium, the township of South Orange Village. You know, making sure that, you know, we represent ourselves with the same sort of letterhead, the same letters, the same email signatures, the same business cards, and just look at all that kind of wide variety of things, you know, as we do that with the website, and start to formalize kind of the baseline of branding for the village online, and then what each department kind of builds on top of that, making sure that all of our paper material, business cards, all that kind of stuff is consistent with that. So we're kind of digging through some of old emails and archives, and the, basically, putting all that information together and trying to put together a booklet of, you know, all the different, you know, here's the square logo, here's horizontal, here's vertical, and we can use that in all the different, you know, just take something out and drag and drop it into any marketing material we need to use, and just make everything more consistent. So I had something on here about the two towns mayor's report, which I want to actually save till next time. The utilities, follow-up, kind of post Sandy, I've mentioned that I'm working with the County Office of Emergency Management on a, kind of a pilot program between us to keep track of power outages through a cloud-based solution like Google Docs. And we are trying to work with PSENG to basically figure out what kind of standard we could use to work with them in creating really what needs to be a national standard for collecting outage information. Same way police, fire departments, emergency first responders, you know, are starting to use standardized data formats, standardized language, so that if you have to respond from one state into another, you can plug right into the system, you know, literally or not. And utility companies just don't have any of that right now, they're all in different systems, different software platforms, they're don't, they're not compatible. So we're trying to find a way to integrate those things, and as part of that, working with Senator Lautenberg's office and a couple other of our representatives at the county and state and federal level, but organizing a roundtable with PSENG and making sure that we're all on board with these things to kind of move forward. PSENG did reach out, and I will report, you know, to the board and to the public, they did reach out and ask us to support by resolution their Energy Strong initiative. I asked a number of questions about concerns that we've raised directly to them before, and to the state legislature, and to the BPU, about when we can get some commitments on some of these changes being made, some of the costs associated with some of their ideas. For example, they proposed moving all of our power lines to the street, but they have no idea how much it will cost. They don't have even a guess of a range of how many millions and millions of dollars, tens or probably hundreds of millions of dollars that would cost to do in the whole town. And so they really, they haven't done their homework, I think, yet for us to be able to support anything like that. So we've asked for a bunch of South Orange specific information, well, how is the Energy Strong program going to improve infrastructure in South Orange? How many dollars are coming here? Have you identified the areas that need improvement? What's the cost associated with moving the poles to the front yard? What's the timeline on commitment to providing, you know, the twice-daily reports that we've asked for, so it's not just haphazard? And basically, there's no commitments on any of those things. So hopefully, we can hear back from them with some commitments at some point, and we'd be, you know, perhaps in a position to say that we, you know, support what they're doing moving forward, but at this point, you know, they're kind of so vague that there's really nothing to support. But that is all moving forward, and, and again, it's great to have the county, our state legislators, federal legislators, you know, that are really interested in supporting some of these ideas and moving them forward. We posted the results of the feedback survey about Hurricane Sandy on the website, you can go on there and look at them. It's just the results of all the different questions that we asked, and there were only about 80 surveys that were filled out, so it's really not scientific. It's not necessarily representative of the entire village, just kind of for informational purposes. I will make a few, again, you know, take this with a grain of salt because of the low number of completions of the survey. Even though almost 200 people actually started the survey, the tool shows you how many people started it, how many people completed it, only about 80 completed. So we're not really sure what happened there. But anyway, just a few notable points that I'll mention, and people should go on the website and look at all of the results if they want to. 70% of residents were satisfied or very satisfied with the village's response to Hurricane Sandy, while only 10% of residents were satisfied or very satisfied with the responses of PSENG or of New Jersey Transit. Each of those were at about 10%. So that's a pretty, pretty significant drop-off, pretty low approval rating. Approximately 40% of residents directly used village resources, the website, Twitter, the phone calls, things like that. And the biggest block of all the checkboxes of things that people did use was the reverse 911 voice email text system. And I think, second to that, was word of mouth. And so it's nice to know that people are using the resources we have, but clearly, we need more people to sign up in that system. You know, we are launching a new notification system very soon, we're in the process of switching things over right now. But I will still, you know, remind people to sign up at southorange.org alerts. 73% of residents, their daily commute was impacted by Hurricane Sandy, pretty significant, although not too much of a surprise. I think we all know, pretty commuting population. And 33% of residents relocated as a result of Hurricane Sandy. And that includes relocating to any number of kind of places. Also, for the residents who lost power...
You mean temporary?
Yes, 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 yeah, thank you. Which is still, I mean, you know, saying that, you know, it's frustrating for our residents who did have to relocate temporarily, but like, you know, compared to what's happening down at the shore in New York, the Rockways, Long Island, I mean, you know, these people are relocated and, you know, still haven't gotten back to their homes. Anyway, and about, out of all the residents who did lose power out of that group, which was almost all of our residents, that was about 85% of the residents who lost power, lost power for more than eight days, which is pretty significant. So that shows there is a pretty big lead time before power outages, you know, even started coming back online. So what's gonna be kind of interesting to do is, you know, the disinformation and the feedback and all the notes people wrote are all being used to form the report that will come to the board, which is at this point, a little bit late for me. But anyway, comparing some of these numbers to what happened in other towns, and then finding some recommendations that we can make internally and externally to move forward. And one last thing that I did want to mention tonight is there is a program called Together North Jersey, which is a, so I want to talk just a little bit about this, and I'm gonna forward some information out to the board after the meeting tonight. Basically, we've been asked by this organization to adopt or pass a memorandum of understanding, basically supporting what they want to do. So I'll just very quickly give a little update, because I had a meeting on Sunday about this. It's a planning initiative underway, 13 counties in the North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority region. In 2011, the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, awarded Together North Jersey $5 million grant, and the grant was matched by another $5 million. The grant funds are used for a couple different things, to develop a regional plan for sustainable development for this region in North Jersey, to find 15 local projects and implement those, and so there's actually a grant opportunity there for us, which we're following up on, and provide technical assistance and educational opportunities that build the capacity of organizations and municipalities and counties to advance sustainability projects and initiatives.
Are they looking for shovel-ready projects?
Not, I mean, I think everyone at this point is looking for a project that they can see a really quick return from. And it's not, not, not quite shovel-ready, it can be a little, for this, it's a little bit, they're interested in helping plan some of these things out too. So we're gonna work with them on that. You know, they're looking at place-based and issue-based, they really want to look at how trains and systems are connected, how people are developing sustainably, and looking at how that impacts affordable housing, jobs, education, culture, you know, as populations move throughout New Jersey. So it's an interesting organization, and they have a really, you know, great goal of trying to get us to understand and be part of, you know, larger regional initiatives about these things. And again, there is a grant, a small grant opportunity available for municipalities that are involved in it. So I'm gonna send out the MOU, it's a draft from Together North Jersey, to the board, and hopefully, we can, people can look at it, think about it, and hopefully, we can support it in our next meeting, and I, and I believe that will put us in a better position, and we may have to do that, to be eligible for the grants. So this is something that kind of budded out of Building One New Jersey, the New Jersey Regional Coalition, and some of those other organizations, so... Anyway, it's pretty interesting, forward the information out, if there's any members of the public who wants to be involved in that, they're interested in working with community stakeholders, houses of worship, local activists, transportation experts. So we're definitely gonna forward out some of this information to, like, the Transportation Advisory Committee, Environmental Commission, and a couple of our other resident groups that they can be, you know, involved as, you know, citizens too. So that's everything, Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, a couple things, follow-up, one that you mentioned, we are in the process of the implementation and training for Everbridge, which is our new emergency notification system, I've sat through a couple of sessions with that. We'll be getting the new deputy village administrator involved as well, village president's been involved. We are gonna do everything possible to port over all our current enrollees to that system, working through it with the vendor. There may be some issues relating to passwords and people's passwords and the password conventions in Everbridge in terms of requiring capitals or number of characters and things that may or may not have applied when people enrolled in ours. They're, they're looking for a workaround there, which may involve an email notification with a temporary password to people to go back on and set up a new password. But that, that's coming, and the formal rollout, I would think, is probably within the next four to six, eight weeks, tops. It's moving on pretty nicely. Thirdin Valley, we touched upon, some of, Mr. Baumann was here, again, financial agreement, we've introduced. The development agreement and a lot of more specific terms will be the subject at the next meeting. We are in ongoing discussions with the developer, specifically relating to the rescue squad site. We're currently looking and focusing on one of the sites, I think, that has the most attention right now, is the spot where we were gonna put the trailers, which then leads me into the Village Hall renovation discussion. As most of you are aware, the overall cost of the trailers, particularly running utilities, the infrastructure and building them, customizing them, the cost became, when you ran it out on a per-month basis, it became more beneficial to the village to look at off the space, and we are proceeding in that direction, that frees up that lot, which it looks like will be a suitable site for the rescue squad. We have awarded the contract for, which we did recently, the asbestos abatement professional. In conjunction with that, we had, and I had mentioned it a couple times, we were gonna try and have the construction manager here, he had some scheduled conflicts, and now that we're at the point with the abatement contractor, or the abatement professional, they're finalizing their documents, and one of the things they're gonna give us is a, probably the most realistic or, or, you know, industry-specific cost estimate for the abatement, as well as the abatement projected schedule, both of which are critical pieces of the overall timeline and the overall budget. So as soon as we get that information from them, we will then incorporate in...
I would still, still like to see...
Yeah, it's gonna be soon, so...
See the construction manager.
Yeah, he's gonna come, and, but we're, we're kind of like, because of his conflict, we couldn't do it, and now we're sort of on the cusp of getting those sort of two critical pieces, because we would've presented and said...
Anytime we're spending this amount of money for something this serious, I wanna see the person.
So they're, they're, I'll pin down the schedule and pin down with Hashmod on those two asbestos, well, the schedule of the asbestos, which really drives the full schedule, and then the asbestos cost, which is sort of, we've gotten now the cost estimates on the construction from the architect, but the architect is not really in a position to give us a detailed asbestos abatement expense, and that, that's obviously gonna be a considerable expense. We wanted to get those two locked in before we kind of rolled it all out. The capital projects, as you know, we did, well, we had an existing capital project in Rasher-Turrell, it's a DOT grant. Those plans are all completed, they're down at DOT, they have to be, because of the DOT funding, they have to be reviewed and approved by the DOT. Our engineer indicates he expects to get that back within a couple of weeks, but they go out to bid. So I think we can see Turrell being out to bid, accepting bids and awarding likely in May, and construction to follow shortly thereafter. We also, last year funded Thordon, and you recall, the recent bond bonus, the early capital we just did. Based on the engineer's recommendation, we added Kings of the Court Terrace, Rinda, and Ridgewood to that project to get some economies of scale. The village engineer's office, they have already basically been completed on Thordon, they're now finalizing the plans and specs for those additional roads. He indicates he anticipates those being done likely by the end of the month, and going out to bid as well. So again, we'd probably be looking to accept bids and award in potential second meeting in May, which is almost at the end of the month because of the holiday. And again, with that work to start shortly thereafter. The, also in the early capital was the CAT RMS from the police system, which is the dispatch and the records management. And as we have indicated to you, this system that we have is really being sort of band-aided together. We have had presentations from three of the, the major three vendors in the area that work with the other departments in the area. We are working with a consultant from New Jersey, Institute of Technology, to provide some analysis of those different components in conjunction with our department. All three of them are under state contract, so it's more a situation of picking the best fit, both in terms of cost and in terms of functionality, what the department needs. But we anticipate that happening fairly soon. On the IT end, we have, from my understanding now, everything's on the servers, over at the firehouse and out of here, which we had some older servers in the basement, and those were sort of at risk of going, so that's now, then again, Stan Wilkinson sort of coordinated all that. Trustee Levinson has been very involved, is chair of the IT committee, and so that's, that's just another step in the process we're working on. We also had in there some early capital, if you will, for some additional computer storage systems and cameras, security cameras, and part of the overall wireless network, and the antennas for Seaton Hall and up to the hill, and those pieces are starting to really fall in place. Again, I think that's all gonna be completed here in the spring and summer, and we're gonna have probably the... going to have probably the IT system that will be the envy of every municipality in the state. It's really a credit to the trustee Levison, the IT committee, Stan, for sort of the foresight. So those are sort of the new developments, and beyond that, there's a number of other items I'm sure will be discussed by the various committee trustees. I think that took five hours, stuff.
Barry, a couple of things. Number one, you talked about road projects. What about Blanchard and Crest? Those were funded last year, and we're supposed to get underway this year?
Oh, yeah, those, they're also, and I think are getting close to, they're working on --
It's Crest Circle, not Crest Drive.
Crest Circle.
Yeah.
Yeah, I forgot those. Those are also the plans. And both of the Thordon, Kingsland Nose projects and that project are not DOT funded, so it doesn't have to go down the state.
Right.
So as soon as they get completed, we'll get out to bid. And I think they're more or less in the same timeline.
And on the printed agenda, it says SOPAC transfer of ownership. Do you want to comment on that since it's on the agenda?
Well, yeah, that was a matter we discussed earlier in executive session and have discussed here publicly as well. The idea being currently SOPAC technically owns the building and owes the village a significant amount of debt that we owe and have been paying off over the years, the cost of building that building. SOPAC has approached the village on the concept, and I think the realities of their operation and inability to pay that debt service, and rather than -- and having that debt service on their balance sheet has a significantly detrimental impact on their ability to fundraise, to pursue grants of that nature. So the discussion has been basically the village taking ownership of the building, owning the asset that we've been paying on in exchange for forgiving the debt that we're not going to collect. So that's the overall summary of the transaction that worked very closely. Trustee Gould, trustee Levison have been involved from the board. Village President's been involved, working with obviously Mr. Lightner, Mr. Zubek from SOPAC, and that's essentially the transaction we're going to pursue. I think hopefully kind of resolve that albatross once and for all.
Hey, you. Mr. Rothen?
Yes. East Orange Water Commission, we just finished the first round of discovery. It was a huge chore, tens of thousands of documents. We're in the process of looking through those to see where there's shortcomings and making further requests. Given the position that East Orange Water Commission has taken now, this is not a matter of water quality because that's pretty much a foregone conclusion. All of these matters relate to the contract disputes that we're going to have subsequently. On the question of water quality, we're working toward getting a consent order together that will finally resolve the question of what East Orange Water Commission's going to do to deliver us consistently water with acceptable VOC limits. And the good news is that DEP is now more actively involved in those discussions. And we have clearly communicated to East Orange Water Commission that we're not going to be accepting any consent order that isn't signed off in every detail by DEP. And as I say, DEP is working very closely with us, so we're very hopeful that this issue of water quality is going to be brought to a conclusion pretty quickly. The Occidental litigation, we have, of course, tentatively approved the settlement. We're awaiting a fairness hearing, which should take place sometime in the fall. On the Laurin Hill code enforcement matter, there are two pending dates. There's a date on Wednesday for our hearing on our motion for default, and there is on the sixteenth, a hearing before the tenancy court on the landlord's action to evict the tenant. And that's all I have on those matters of litigation.
Hey, you.
Steve, Next G, anything new there?
Next G is still in the discovery phase. There's nothing new to report on that.
Hey, trustee Levison?
Yeah, we were to have a meeting yesterday, but, or last week, we rescheduled it for tomorrow in the afternoon, so I have nothing to report on.
Okay, thank you. We'll come back to legal when trustee Davis Ford returns. Trustee Rosner, planning zoning?
Planning zoning's meeting on April 17th. We did not meet last month.
Trustee Goldberg?
Yeah, public safety. Public safety's meeting this Wednesday, and the last time we met, I was out of town, but trustee Gould generously covered for me. And really, the one action that came out of there was a resident that came forth requesting some parking relief. They live on Western Drive, and they felt that the street is very, very narrow, and they would like to recommend that parking be prohibited on one side of the street. So it was sent to the traffic sergeant, and he made the recommendation that that is in fact a valid concern. In fact, I drove there this weekend myself, and with, if there were to be two cars on each side, it could definitely be problematic for an emergency vehicle to get through. So let me pass this down. So council has drafted an ordinance that I would like to request that we have listed on the next meeting for hearing, if there's no objections. Basically, it's prohibiting parking on one side of the street. Western Drive, if you picture it, is essentially a -- picture a loop, and this is essentially prohibiting parking on the outer loop. You know, it's hard to say right or left, depending which direction you're traveling, but it's the outer loop of the road. And as you go around the loop, it changes from being the north side to the south side.
Yeah, but you just do whatever side's odd numbers or even numbers. It's odd numbers all the way up on one side, so you can --
Yeah, I mean, the ordinance says north and west, from Rinda Road to Western Drive south, and south and west, from Weston Road to Western Drive north. I'm just trying to put it in terms everyone can relate to as you visualize it.
We're going to notice all the residents on Western Drive.
We should -- that's one of the things I want to talk about, is what everyone would like to do.
But I have a question about that. Maybe I'm not understanding geometry perfectly, but so if you're looking at reducing, taking away one of the sides of parking, the outer loop would reduce, would take away more spots because, right, you can fit more cars around the outside? But if the idea is to just, you know, improve the width of the road, wouldn't it make sense to reduce the inner loop and keep more parking spaces overall but have the same effect on the street?
This was the recommendation of the traffic sergeant and --
So that came from the police department that they wanted the --
Absolutely. It's their recommendation based in conjunction with Sal Rinda, and Steve wrote the ordinance, so.
I think the part of the problem is also the driveways, especially when you go to the turn on the inside of the street, there'd be no place to park over there. You have to drive up there and see.
I would suggest, though, before, and we've had experiences where, you know, we did our due diligence and we really were doing something with the hopes of rectifying a problem, and it created another problem. So I don't have any issue with this, except that I have only one request, that we make sure we poll all the residents and that we have buy-in before we make any changes.
On the one hand, I agree with you completely, and we've done that previously. On the other hand, it's a public safety issue, too, so, you know, there absolutely would be a problem if there were cars parked on both sides of the street.
And if it's a public safety, that's fine, but still, at least let people --
Oh, I'm not disagreeing with notifying people. I'm just saying, you know, there will be people that will be inconvenienced. I mean, that's a reality anytime we do something like this, but I think it's for the betterment of the neighbors.
But isn't this a truism for a lot of the roads within the village? There are numerous ones, and if you park on both sides, you can't get through.
This was the recommendation of the police department.
Right.
No, I understand that.
At the meeting, when the gentleman from the community, from Western Drive, started to speak, chief Shale immediately said, "That's a safety issue. I know the street." And he immediately said, "We have to do something about this quickly." So I don't know if there's others, but I know he identified that as being a real issue.
So maybe what we can do, too, is ask the police department to see if they could produce, if they think there are any other streets that might -- I mean, the officers should know the streets well enough that, you know, I mean, I'm glad the resident came forward and brought this concern, but, you know, they shouldn't necessarily need to.
Here's an example, and I thought we were going to start doing this. It would be very helpful, and it would expedite our decision-making processes, being informed. You know, why aren't the department heads here tonight for each of these committees? So that if we do have a question or a resource, we can get an answer, you know, right away. So I would make the request going forward on the conference agenda meetings, that all the department heads be here so that we can be fully engaged and be informed, so that we can expedite some of these decisions that we need to make, you know, with information that they should have. So, you know, if we had questions right now, and the police chief was here and Sal was here, we could get some clear answers.
Maybe what we can make sure to do at the very least is things like this, that we know we're going to be up on the conference agenda, that we can at least ask the department heads that should be here to be here. You know, we should know all these things ahead of time, and actually, that was one of the things we talked about in the last conference agenda, I think, was getting everybody to add what their updates were going to be for each committee beforehand, so that on the agenda, the same way that I have my updates listed and Mr. Lewis, Mr. Rothen usually have theirs, they're trying to add as many bullets as possible of things that we plan to update about.
That would be nice.
And if that's the case, then, you know, then we can make sure to reach out to those department heads ahead of time and --
That would be nice, but other things come up in these areas?
Yeah, but I mean, after the meeting, you know, taking one minute or two minutes to take the bullet points from your notes and put it into the --
It would just be nice to have them here. It's just a standard when it comes to conference agendas. They used to be here at all the meetings, so we're not asking them to be at the voting meetings, but when we're having a conference agenda, and the purpose of that is to have a very robust and informed discussion, they need to be here.
I agree.
They need to be here.
I mean, for example, a committee that didn't meet, I mean, should we still ask that department head to be here?
No, if you just have it standard, then you don't have to --
She said anything, there's an --
Because something can come up.
So.
Right, well, there were two things. I think the first suggestion was all the department heads need to be here at every meeting, and then I --
No, I didn't. I said only conference.
Well, I mean, all the department heads have to be here for all the conference meetings. My suggestion was that perhaps if we know what items are going to be discussed ahead of time, we can make sure the department heads that do need to be here are here. But for example, if public safety hadn't met, and, you know, does it still make sense to ask the police chief and fire chief to be here if there's no report to be given? You know, or if we just get all the items a little bit ahead of time, then we can just ask people who need to be here to be here.
All right, all right.
And if that doesn't work, you know, maybe we can try again. You know, it'd be nice to get all the updates ahead of time so members of the public can also know, for example, the resident from Western Drive perhaps would want to be here and hear the discussion, you know, so the more that we can put that ahead of time.
It's going to be a rare meeting when we won't be the village engineer and somebody from the police department. Face time.
So we'll definitely reach out to the department heads, and if everybody went, you know, before the conference agenda meetings, we could have the clerk send out a reminder, leading up to the conference agenda, reminder of the items for updates, just in case, you know, people forget, and we could try and put some of those bullet points in there.
Thank you.
Sorry, was there anything else from public safety or Nancy? You recall any?
No, I don't. More routine.
Yeah, we're meeting again this Wednesday.
Trustee Davis Ford, we skipped legal, and you're out.
Okay. We didn't meet tonight, so I just wanted you to be aware of that. Our meetings have been changed to the fourth Monday every month, but I just wanted to just talk about two things real quickly. One, if I didn't share this with, at the last meeting, is that I had an opportunity to sit down with Barry, our administrator, and review his new format that he's created for the performance reviews and review, his performance reviews of all the directors or the head of the departments. And I'm very pleased about the process and also the format. I did give some suggestions on how to revise it to be even more comprehensive and really a tool to talk about not just the -- boys, can you pay attention? Not just about how they perform, but really talk about also their areas of strength and the areas where there could be some professional development and a plan put into place to address those issues. So Barry, good job. The other thing I want to talk about real quickly is how I am excited that we have our deputy administrators starting on the fifteenth. And Barry, you've been meeting with him, identifying the areas that you have reviewed with us that he'll be focusing on, setting your expectations of him, and it appears that there's going to be a good symbiotic relationship, and the chemistry is strong. So we have high expectations of you and your leadership with the deputy administrator. And I'm suggesting that you give the board, perhaps maybe in our executive sessions, a thirty-day, sixty-day, and ninety-day report. Okay? That's it for me.
Barry, on that point, I don't know if it's to you or the administrator, he starts Monday, is that right?
Yes.
Is that right? Will he be attending committee meetings as your previous assistant did and took notes at several of them and prepared agendas and all that type of stuff?
Yeah, he and I, we've talked, and certainly he will be attending. I don't, he won't necessarily be attending the ones that I already attend, because that'd be sort of duplication, but, and part of the overall structure, there are certain areas that he's going to be sort of maybe as long as we have sort of attend, but we're going to definitely be attending. He's aware of that. I mean, we're working through him attending, I know, at least initially, possibly joining us on our Monday evenings here.
And not only attending, but doing minutes and agendas for those meetings that he attends?
Well, we're --
I thought we had left off when we were going to, that either --
We actually have, going with a more of a clerical type --
Yeah, it doesn't make sense to have a managerial.
No, yeah, I agree.
Basically, clerical, secretarial staff, to do the minutes and agenda, again, with the idea that the department head level of people and sort of the trustees that are participating in the meeting.
Need to be free to engage.
Difficult for them to be fully engaged and to take the minutes. So I think we've already got one lined up, but focusing on the ones that had vacancies, which is yours.
Right. And what I don't, what I don't want us to do, I want us to be mindful of, your questions are self-a good, that we are legislative body, we set the expectations and, you know, be involved in policy, but the operations of it, that's our administrator's job. So the minutia of, you know, we should rightfully expect minutes to be taken in the meeting, but how the minutes are taken, by whom, I think should be left to the administrator and not us.
Well, I think it's a relevant question. If there's a cost involved, then we need to weigh in as a policy decision. So is, you know, is this something that's part of their job? Is it always has been, or has there been some arrangement reached and?
Well, it's a new position.
Yeah, no, and we've talked about, I mean, we're approaching it basically at a part-time hourly amount, and not enormous amounts, really, but we give it to our --
You need to get into the mic.
No, it's basically existing clerical people, no benefits, no anything, who may be interested in working on a, basically, a part-time hourly, relatively nominal rate.
I think part of the goal, Michael, should be that we have to make sure that the minutes are consistent and the format consistent for every meeting, for every committee meeting. Right now, some committee meetings, department heads take minutes, take very brief minutes. Other ones take much more detailed minutes. I think besides having somebody who's clerical, I think we need to really strive for a consistent format that matches up to whatever agendas at that meeting and a certain level of detail, minimal detail, and make sure that we have a way to make sure that not only posted, but they're emailed to every single trustee on the board, so everybody's aware. I think we have to get back to that kind of consistency.
I agree, and that's part of the goal, is not only in terms of the committee and the committee agendas, the committee meetings, and having a consistent sort of assigned person to do it, but also the level of detail, the format, not only of the minutes, the committee reports, but one of the things I'll be working, I've already started the process with the deputy village administrator, is revamping and re-bringing back in a more standardized and formalized form, department reports, monthly reports, in a standardized format, which will all then be provided. I don't know that we're going to go with that upload to that portal format, but more of a distribution. Monthly reports, which will then come with standardized administrative reports on my own end. I need to do better, and I'm certainly more excited than trustee Davis Ford is about the help that's coming, and I, you know, committing to you, you will see, and it will be a noticeable difference to that point in terms of the minutes. I think that's the, you know, the goal, is to get away from sort of sporadic, which department head or which person's doing it, and how deeply they feel like they can handle emailing agendas and agenda items, and it's existence of that person that is here. I think that's the best solution.
And before you said nominal amount, just specifically, what does that mean?
I'm discussing it, but an hourly rate, fifteen dollars.
Okay. Okay. Okay, just want to make sure. Thank you.
And that's going to be throughout each committee, right? Because I know the rec's minutes are good, and they've been coming out regularly, and no one's been complaining, but I think that it's a better use of Kate's time to not be doing the minutes.
Absolutely, I agree.
Well, we should take the best practices from, like, the rec's minutes are well organized, you know, and we should take that and put that into whatever format's going to be used for everybody.
Right, and candidly --
Right, and candidly, theoretically, if the department heads are not paying someone to go there during the time, but realistically, they're doing the minutes, which are often more time-consuming than actually doing, attending the meeting, they're doing the spray time that's significantly higher, so it's the clerical people, and, you know, you actually save any money in terms of productivity.
You're not.
Well, we want the department heads to participate in the meeting, not sit there and take notes.
Right, but not then go back during regular time, spend three hours, five minutes, that they could be doing something that they're actually paying.
And I do think it's in the code somewhere that the trustee in the committee will take, will be the secretary and take the minutes.
We've discussed that 100 times, we're saying we should change the...
Yes, I mean, we should, because we've been doing it informally one way for, but it is, you know, it is a policy change that at some point, you know, if the trustees aren't going to...
If that's in the minutes, it won't happen with me. I don't take minutes.
Which brings up, which brings up a very important thing, which is the code, because we've been looking for a working session with the trustees, because the recodification has a number of these items that require policy decisions to be made. The recodification can't take place unless the trustees sit with us and work through them. So at some point in the not-too-distant future, we hope to have that working session with you all.
I would do it tonight, May 14th.
May 15th.
I think 14th.
15th. Make it a dialogue session.
Let's vote on it. Who wants May 14th?
I do.
Go right ahead.
Yeah, you can do it. Awesome.
There are a lot of good ordinances, like galloping horses on Main Street and things like that.
At 10:30, we'll start a session.
I heard 7:00 AM.
Okay.
Okay. Trustee Bauer?
Public Works, not me, I want to bring to the board's attention two things. One is, I think it's been a month since we asked the administrator to get back to us on the idea of a person who would be, who would have property maintenance as his or her, you know, primary responsibility. I did actually work on a job description this weekend, because I didn't see it in any report, Deputy of Assistance View, and if so...
I'm happy to look at it. I have had to meet some discussions with Tommy, and even trying to really go back to the history, there actually is on the books, Division of Environmental Grounds, that used to be staffed, and there used to be maintenance people assigned, and somehow, I suspect some of that probably did get outsourced, and I guess you could do it that way, but I think that we're actively exploring that, including his current staffing level, the people that he has, what talents he do or don't have. We actually have currently some vacancies in that department, and it's part of the discussion, is if that's a position to look for when we're hiring.
So at the next meeting, we'll come back with some kind of recommendation. Is that fair?
Sure.
Okay. And the second thing is that the, you know, I hadn't really contemplated the amount of damage and what it's going to cost to clean up the trees, which are very dangerous on the, in the area south of Waterlands, where we do have a McCann path that, you know, people do take walks all the time, you know, even with their strollers and so on and so forth. There was a tremendous amount of damage done by the hurricane back there, and there's a lot of trees that were uprooted, limbs that are hanging, limbs that were actually broken off and are now hanging by the vines that, you know, grew up the trees and stuff like that. I hesitate to even ask what that, although apparently Tommy has kind of scoped out some kind of a figure of what it's going to cost to clean up in there. It doesn't seem like it's a priority in terms of, DPW is still cleaning up a lot of things that are left that, you know, would be higher priorities, but because of the public safety problems and Sal's emphasis on some of the other public safety problems south of the DPW yard, you know, the building and so on and so forth, this is going to come back, and I'm not sure exactly when it's going to come back, but we really can't ignore that. And it, you know, it probably should, we should probably focus some of the capital and/or operating budget on what I'll just call the areas south of DPW, regardless of which side of the river it's on, because there's no sense pursuing some of the other improvements that we're talking about. You know, if people can walk across the bridge, for instance, and then be in a very unsafe environment, bridge meaning, you know, the third bridge that Sal is undertaking improvements to. And the last thing I just wanted to ask is, is, does the capital budget now have the improvement for the access road to DPW and the repaving of the yard, or is that still...
No, it was actually in last year's capital budget. I want us to say $250,000 or $260,000 for the paving of the DPW recycling. Now, that did not, one of the things we're looking at is, you know, whether that's enough to incorporate demolition building. That was an envision, that was actually for the roadway leading in, but looking at possibly expanding that to include demolition and...
So that can go...
We're trying to get the costs together, because we're looking at various sources, including the Open Space Trust Fund or the recycling grants. You can use...
The other, the added element is that because of the elevations and stuff, it's the permitting issues and all.
So, I mean, obviously, now that we've passed the maintenance policy for open space lands, the Open Space Trust Fund could be used as well for the areas south of Waterlands for that...
Correct.
...tree maintenance, I guess I'll call it, or tree cutting. So we have a lot of demands, and my suggestion would be to organize a meeting of perhaps our committee, because that's kind of a joint thing anyway, DPW and Finance, with, along with the Open Space Advisory Board, and if people are agreeable, I'll go forward in doing that, to do that in the next few weeks.
But in fact, I think Sal and Tommy agreed to fix up the potholes in the recycling yard itself now.
They're fixable.
Well...
Okay, whatever.
It's better than...
Yeah, okay, but I think, you know, I think we should get a meeting together and start regularizing that process, at least in terms of the planning phase again. Is that acceptable?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Trustee Gold?
Rec met on the 28th, the meetings should be posted at this point. Two things I wanted to mention, you know, there's been a lot of talk about the park, the playground that's next to the pool, and my understanding is it's supposed to be opening this week. Is that true, Mr. Lewis?
The new playground?
The new playground, right.
Hurricane, the actual woodships are supposed to be put in tomorrow.
Excellent. So those who are questioning that this weekend, here's your chance to get out there to the playground. And the pool's scheduled to open the 25th. You can get your badge now.
There are good weather on the water there, we can't...
And I, yes, if anyone wants to have a chat with me, 10:01 on the 25th, you can find me at the pool. That's it.
Thank you. So we've got a couple of quick discussion items. Trustee Goldberg, you had added Village Hall renovation budget project timeline?
Yeah, actually, Barry, if you could pass me the dongle for the projector, the cable for the projector. I had updated the presentation I had shared about a year and a half ago.
It's from one?
Yeah, yeah. I actually thought it would be worth doing a checkpoint. I'd heard your comments before that obviously this is still a work in progress and there's still...
Yeah.
There's still further estimates to come, but I thought it was important to take a checkpoint, you know, as we go, the estimates are constantly going to be refined as we learn more. And this is in the...
Yeah.
Is it not the, on the broadcast?
Oh, that's all right.
The broadcast is...
Built into the computer.
Built into the...
Oh. It's all right, I'll post it online. Or do you want, Barry, I'm going to email it to you, is that easier?
I mean, in the future with these sort of things, Trustee Goldberg, could you maybe let us know ahead of time? You know, ideally, the project update should be coming from Mr. Lewis or from the engineer, right?
Go ahead, let him make it. He only has two, three more meetings. Okay. Two? Two more, two?
Deborah, please.
Trustee Gold.
Add an extra meeting.
She's counting.
I'd love for you to be here.
I have that engraved in my head.
Yeah, I mean, if you can't figure this out, we can do this at the next meeting. You know, you got to give a heads up on this sort of thing.
We'll have it as email right now.
Do you have the clicker?
Maybe I can enhance the flow.
Does he need this?
I don't know.
Yes, no?
Yeah, well, I guess if you want to click your face, otherwise you got to tell me.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
But I had some...
While they're setting it up, can we talk about something else?
Why don't we go onto the next item?
Hey, want to go number two?
Come back.
Sure, which is, State issued additional retail privilege license to...
No. Oh, okay. Thank you.
So what this is... So, sorry, before you start, in the future, I'll allow this tonight, but in the future, you absolutely, or any trustee needs to email some licenses ahead of time. You know, you can't circumvent the entire agenda process to do your own presentation. And this should be done by, you know, the official update, be done by a member of the village staff. So, you know, you're free to make the presentation tonight, but for anybody watching, this is by no means an official update from the village. This is Trustee Goldberg's personal opinion of an update. This has not been approved or vetted by village staff or by the board of trustees. So there's confusion by members of the public sometimes. So, you know, again, free to make the presentation, but this is completely your personal opinion, which is your free to make.
Okay, well, thank you for the lecture, and just like the update on the village website about the Sandy results was your opinion. So anyway, what this is, is an update from a presentation I did in December of 2011, and just updates the date and the amount. There won't be any surprises here. So the goal is to share a public update on the progress to date since the last time this was given, December of 2011. And ideally, this should be done at least twice a year. For what it's worth, we've been told, you know, several times in the past four months that the construction manager is going to be here, for a variety of reasons, they haven't been here. So the public has a right to know where we are with this project and what it's costing. So since the last update, this is again, just an inventory of the things that have been done, we all know this, but the public may not be following. One of the items that we talked about last time, again, back in 2011, was getting a construction manager on board. So last March, a contract was awarded to Jay Shapiro and Associates in the amount of $207,816. So that's been completed.
What are you reading from this last update?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm advancing on my screen. Sorry, Mark, I apologize.
Yep.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
My apologies. The construction drawings, 90%, I believe, is my understanding, they were complete by end of last year, and obviously going to wait until the asbestos abatement is complete to completely finalize those construction drawings. Relocation site, at one point, we had finalized, quote unquote, "a decision to move to mobile offices on Second Street." However, we're now reconsidering that and considering vacant retail or commercial space on South Orange Avenue, as the administrator said earlier. HVAC, again, a decision was reached since we met last, since we discussed this last, to go with geothermal as the source. A change order for $53,870 was issued to the architect. With respect to asbestos assessment and abatement, obviously, there was a need to update the assessment and the need for specifications. So a contract was awarded for $17,750 for the assessment. A contract for $63,140 was awarded for the preparation of specs and the abatement itself. Contract will follow with a separate bid and contract. And Mr. Lewis, please, if there's anything I say here that you disagree with, please chime in, but I believe this is all factual stuff, it's just putting it all in one nice As far as the timeline, these were some tasks that, again, we talked about last time. That first column was the baseline, what we had said in December of 2011, what we were targeting. Again, there were a lot of things that we know now that we didn't know then, so some of these dates have slipped quite a bit, and some things have happened. The schematic drawings have been completed, the construction drawings still need to be done, as I said. Construction manager was put out to bid and awarded, so that completed. But the construction bid itself and the construction contract and the start of construction, when we first did this back in December of 2011, we thought that was going to happen by middle of 2012. Now, I guess, best guess of that all to start is probably third quarter of 2013. Relocation, again, the original baseline that we had identified, this is when we were talking about trailers, and we're going to have to go out to bid and improve the site and award the contract. Now, that's applicable anymore, because we're not going to mobile trailers, but clearly, staff still needs to be relocated. At one point last year, we thought that was going to occur by second quarter of 2012. We're now talking about probably, realistically, third quarter of 2012. By third quarter, I mean sometime between, you know, June, July, and August, sometime over the summer. This is the exact same thing, but just representing it visually. The gray boxes and bars represent kind of what the baseline was, the dark blue bars represent kind of where we are today. Again, this is a point in time. I'm not saying this is the be-all, end-all, but this is where we are as of best guess, as of what we know right now. Potentially, construction's starting in the middle of next year. That two-year time window is, I'm assuming, a constant, so we're, I would anticipate it would wrap up in the middle of 2015, with staff being back by end of 2015. So obviously, big question, you know, where does all this mean with respect to cost? What we talked about last time, in 2009, the estimate was $3.9 million. In 2011, we were at $4.2 million, including the asbestos abatement. The most recent estimate is $5.2 million, which includes the geothermal and the sprinklers, but not the asbestos abatement. That was taken out of the estimate. And then other fees, such as the architect, construction manager, relocation, furniture, signage, landscaping, et cetera, are all additional. So again, comparing the baseline where we were in December of 2011, we thought the overall project was about $5.2 million. We're now looking at approximately $7.1 million with what we know today. And again, that's pre-bid, we haven't gone out to bid yet, so it could come in more, it could come in less. This doesn't account for the actual moving or build-out of any space. These are just based on numbers that we, that we know. The construction manager number was a two-year contract, but being that that started last year, and that the construction project is scheduled to go for another two years beyond this, that number's probably going to increase. There'll probably need to be a change order for the construction manager, because that two-year contract will easily go to be a three-year contract. The asbestos abatement, we talked about those numbers before, and so, just so people have an understanding of the ballpark of what we're talking about, a roughly $7 million project. The geothermal sprinklers are included in that number, but things like landscaping or any change orders or signage, any unknown unknowns that come about, obviously are not included. Funding, we had previously allocated $5 million in capital funding, the New Jersey Historic Trust grant for $669K had been awarded, and then we need, obviously, need to figure out where the difference is going to come from, or potentially value engineer the project down to get it below that $7 million estimate. And that's, that's it. And then just kind of summarizing, based on where we are, what needs to be done next at a high level, and this is just for the benefit of the public, the asbestos abatement specs, as Mr. Lewis said, are underway, those need to be completed. Village Hall obviously needs to be vacated, the move to temporary offices, wherever that may be. The asbestos abatement contract has to be put out to bid and awarded. Construction documents need to be completed, and then the construction project needs to be put out to bid. Again, not necessarily in that order, but those are kind of the high-level, big ideas that are yet to come. So again, just to be realistic, you know, I know we've talked about perhaps construction starting this summer, and I think being that it's April now, that's possible, but again, if you mean construction by the asbestos abatement, that could certainly get underway. But that's still a short window of time, it's only two months, to vacate this, to find alternate space, to build out that space, and to vacate this building. So, you know, just so people have an understanding, a realistic expectation of where we are and what we know at this time, again, very subject to change, who knows? You know, two, three, four years from now, one of the project is, long since over, you know, I just think this is a useful exercise to look back and say, okay, this is what we knew then, and here's what it turned out to be. Hopefully, it's better, and just thought it's worth taking that checkpoint in time. That was it. Does anyone have any questions or corrections or comments?
I should just point out that some, I mean, there have been different reasons for some of the delays, but part of the, I know, but I just want to point out, to make a public disclosure, that part of the delay was when the private village administrator left. We did put stuff on hold until we got to the point where we said to him, to Mr. Lewis, you know, get your, get the house in order for the first three months and then go back to the project. So, there's probably a six to eight-month delay due to the changeover in administration.
And then, again, I, this isn't about pointing fingers, I'm not casting blame.
I know, I know, but I just...
It's just a point in time.
The interpretation could be that...
Yep, wasn't, wasn't casting blame.
Well, the other part to it is, one, I would wait for the project manager, and we hired a project manager specifically to give us the kinds of estimates that we're looking for. I would look forward to his estimate. The other is that we put in a geothermal system because the operating expenses will be significantly reduced in the future. Those are decisions that the board made as we went along, I mean, that's a value engineering process that we go through.
And again, Howard, I'm not criticizing, or I'm simply stating the facts, that people just should understand where the project is at this moment in time and why it is, why it is.
But the point, the point is, is that you put up, geothermal was put in, the point is, is that it was done based upon...
I wasn't criticizing or making commentary.
I think the point that Trustee Levinson makes, which is a good one, is that you talk about costs rising, quote-unquote, on the project, when in fact, if you look at five years, or 10 years, or 20 years, the cost may actually be less. So although this may, quote-unquote, be factual, in your opinion, it's not factual unless you're taking into account a five, or 10, or 20-year outlook, which is the outlook that was used to make the decision about geothermal. So that's why we have professionals, project managers, and construction managers that are going to come in and give the, you know, official report about this project, and they will discuss those sort of details, because having the public understand this process is very important, but making sure that people understand, well, $200,000, for example, I'm pulling a number out of thin air, spent now, but that if it's saving $50,000 a year, it's actually a cost reduction for the taxpayers over a period of time, and this presentation obviously doesn't show those sort of details.
It's not about spin, Alex, it's about truth, about the facts, period.
Well, I would have a couple of comments. One, in terms of the funding sources on this page, there is an additional, I think it's $175,000 Department of Interior grant that would be added on to that, and I would also note that there's $5 million that was recently allocated, some of the original design costs and stuff, including a portion of the architects' money was from even older and has already been spent from older ordinances, that doesn't change the overall cost, but in terms of where the funding source, the shortfall, if you will, would not be, want to be offset by that interior grant too, some of the expense already charged to older ordinances. The other point, on the cost estimate summary, on this page, you actually, it's not really apples-to-apples, because on the next page, you do reflect that in the number in the 13 does include the geothermal and the sprinkler, which by my count, that's $423,000, that was not in the baseline, that needs to be added back in, which would then bring your $5,000,002 up to $5,660,000, in terms of comparing the two. And then, the final point I would point out is, candidly, the December 2009, I wasn't part of, I don't know who was the process, based on what, when I did get in and have turned my attention to this, I candidly, I think that was way too premature to be really releasing the scheduling or the cost estimates, you know, at that level of detail from an architect or just that, for sort of back of the envelope, and that's why you actually hire a cost estimator to get a realistic cost estimate, and that's the risk, you know, and you have to balance, how much do we go public with, because then you set yourself up for somehow you're below the budget when it was a back-of-the-napkin sort of architect's estimate to begin with, you know, and the proof is in the fact that if that was sufficiently accurate, you wouldn't pay money for a cost estimator to do an actual cost estimate, so there certainly has been some cost, you know, some growth, and as far as the timing, and again, I wasn't part of this, I wasn't put together, but I know I got here in first quarter '12, and if somebody was thinking in December of 2011 that the trailers were already going to be going out to bid in the first quarter '12, I don't know what that was based on, because what I saw was nowhere near most of these, you know, at least when I walked in in February. Now, maybe this was based on, and maybe that hiatus of not having anyone here, but certainly, that's when I got here, and I know that these were not really in a position to be done, but we are, you know, I agree with Trustee Goldberg, that it's important that, particularly now that we are getting to the point where we do have realistic figures, and what I think is going to be very realistic timelines, that those be put out there, the public understand them and know where we're at, what we're getting into. Part of the process of the presentation has been a sort of thorough analysis of going back to what expenses were already paid for out of older ordinances, and more or less what expenses are remaining and what monies are remaining, because that's the real determinant, the shortfall.
Yeah, and I think, I think it's important that people look at this, and this board, you know, I won't be here, but I think as a resident, I want this board to look at it holistically. It's real easy to approve, you know, $15,000 here, $50,000 there, $60,000 there, but when you look at it over time, and you look at it in aggregate, I think the public deserves that, deserves to know. I mean, we had similar problems with SOPAC, you know, it started out as $4 million, became $10 million, became $15 million, next thing you know, you know, you're talking real money. So I don't want the same thing to happen here, I think it's important that there's a holistic view and decisions are looked at that way.
Well, and hopefully, when we have the construction manager come in, we can actually get a holistic view, which will look at the cost of, to the village, over more than just this one period, and not basing our timelines off of what your last presentation said and what it says now. So I appreciate your energy and enthusiasm about doing this, don't know why you tried to sneak this in without approaching myself, Mr. Lewis, Mr. Renda, anybody that's involved in actually managing the project on a daily basis, which is not the responsibility of an individual trustee.
It's on the agenda, Alex, if you don't like the message, you know, I know...
It's not about the message, it's not about the message, the difference is that...
You're on transparency when you control the message, Alex, and this, I'm sorry, this is the truth and this is the fact, if you don't like it, that's your choice.
Well, it's your truth and it's your facts, because again, with the very specific example of the geothermal, your conclusion about the cost is wrong, you know, you're giving a cost...
It was a change order.
You're giving a cost in one year, but what you may not understand, and what's important for the public to understand, is that all of us, or most of us, I think, try to look at budgeting more than just a one-year period, it's not just about what the cost of a project is, you know, for example, solar panels, which I'm sure you've heard of, there is an investment that you have to make in the beginning...
Relax, what are they? Explain to me, because I love your condescending attitude. What's a solar panel?
Well, I'll explain to you.
Tell me how it works.
So basically, it's a product that you put an investment in and save money in the long term, which is the same what geothermal does, so just, so you understand, you know, as soon to be a resident, that when you look at something...
I'm currently a resident and currently a taxpayer. Thank you.
That when you look at the cost of a project like this, and you look at like the cost of something like geothermal, that there's going to be a cost savings in the long run, and I think those sort of things are important. Again, appreciate your enthusiasm, don't appreciate the sneakiness, but...
It's on the agenda.
But you didn't mention, but you didn't mention that you were going to do a presentation, you didn't check with anybody to check with some of the facts that were inaccurate.
Did you check with us to know that, to tell us there was going to be a presentation of your graphing tool? I mean, come on, you didn't tell us about your presentation.
A presentation showing someone a tool that exists on a website is different than you as a personal trustee who has no responsibility or authority over the management of an operational project, inferring your own ideas about a project, and making that transparency is great, we both love transparency, everybody knows that.
You would love, you love spin, I like transparency, there's a big, huge difference.
It's not worth arguing anymore, you know, couple, couple meetings left, and hopefully we can move on from the politics and actually focus on doing some work at this governing body. Unless there's any other comments about this, I'd love to move on to the next item on the discussion, which is the state-issued additional retail privilege license to Giorgio's restaurant, and I guess I will say one last thing, which is that anybody who is interested in this sort of holistic view of the project, please make sure to pay attention to the board meeting, when the paid professional who manages the project is going to do a presentation, which may be exactly the same as this, but may not be.
When is he coming, this guy?
Yeah, we...
May 15th.
May 15th he's coming?
He was supposed to come in January, he was supposed to come in February. He's supposed to come every month, and he hasn't come.
We, again, as I indicated, we are, the two biggest sort of remaining unknowns, one relates to the asbestos and that's impacted the schedule, because that's the first step, and the asbestos cost, and we are now progressed to the point where we have the asbestos professional onboard who can provide that information, so as soon as we get that, I will, I will check tomorrow where you're at, when we will have that incorporated, and I will tomorrow check with Shapiro's office, Mr. Fritz, his availability, and we'll get him scheduled as soon as he's ready.
Yeah, it'd be great, especially now, to get them scheduled to come in and present everything else sooner rather than later. So again, moving on, state-issued additional retail privilege license to Giorgio's. I don't know who wants to be, I'm not sure as far as how much we're allowed to or not allowed to speak about this, Mr. Lewis or Mr. Roether, I'm not sure who added this either.
This is ABC.
I, I don't have that, that we're...
Who added it?
I'm not sure who added it.
Who added it?
Actually, with all due respect, Mr. President, I had asked if you, if we could put this on the agenda, not for a full, robust board discussion, but just to see if, you know, there were any general questions with respect to the Unionville Vineyards putting an application with the state for...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, the what?
The Unionville Vineyards has put in a request to the state, ABC, to allow for an additional new retail consumption license at one of our local restaurants to sell New Jersey wines.
Oh, okay.
Take it up to, take it up to five, is it in one restaurant?
That is correct, yes.
Take it up to five, so if there were five vineyards...
Up to five vineyards, five, not, not five bottles of, of wine, okay.
Yeah, five vineyards, yes. Take it up to five vineyards at one restaurant.
Unique niche area in the liquor licensing laws.
That is correct.
New Jersey Vineyards can request...
It's actually been amazing that other restaurants haven't done this before.
They can request permission, they don't, obviously, have a liquor license, and what they're allowed to do is then, both for consumption on premises and they also sell their local wines to patrons, can take them...
And they only can sell that, right?
And Howard just said that you can bring your BYOB as well, you're not limited to the New Jersey wine.
Yeah, state law allows it.
Rob, I didn't hear what you said, Mark, about five, what was it?
You can have up to five vineyards in one restaurant, you can't have an unlimited number of Jersey.
And there's an application for each one?
But they'll have to be Jersey.
Right now, there's one vineyard in New Jersey that has applied for this special license with the state, it wouldn't be issued by South Orange Village, it would be issued by the state. And so the ABC is asking this governing body, if you have any comments, they would appreciate those written comments.
Rob, and I have a couple of questions, because I imagine they will hear from our
local, our current bar owners that are currently selling alcohol, or store owners that are selling alcohol. How does this work? I mean, as we all know, the price of a liquor license in this town is astronomical, and here they have the, this restaurant gets a quote-unquote "free liquor license," so how does that work? And can, can this Unionville Vineyard go to every restaurant, or is there a limit to how many restaurants can participate in this? Do you know how that works?
They're representative of the vineyard.
In New Jersey, New Jersey wineries are allowed to have this special concessionaire's permit. So we have a restaurant in town that has made application for that permit, the ABC is letting us now know that...
Can any restaurant do that?
Yes, yes.
If you go to Basilica in Milburgh, they have a vineyard.
Just, just to your point, though, any restaurant...
I'm just trying to understand, I'm not...
I know, but any restaurant that paid for a liquor license knew that this was always available, and for the most part, restaurants that open these don't tend to attract the same, you know, someone who has a full-fledged liquor license and selling mixed drinks, et cetera, et cetera, usually doesn't necessarily see this as competition, but they knew, this has been, this has been available for years, so it's not something that's newly sprung upon.
It's not, it's not a new law?
No, no.
It's been available for as long as it's been onboard.
I think the restaurant owner did it years ago, and he didn't do it for long because it didn't make any sense for him, but it's been done before.
So I'm just asking, can, can every rest, theoretically, any restaurant in town can go ahead and do this now? I'm making up an example, Trotteria could do it, or Stones could do it, or Harrah could do it...
The state may turn them down, but theoretically, anyone could do it.
So there's not, is there a limit, like, just like there is on regular liquor licenses, there's a limit on number, based on per capita, is there a similar restriction with these?
This is to promote business for the state of New Jersey.
Really? So any restaurant, theoretically, okay, I'm, I'm learning here, I'm just asking questions.
But I think there's a limitation on the number of restaurants for that vineyard.
Within the municipality, within the state?
Within the state.
We'll send you a memo, we'll give you a memo on how the, how it works.
No, I mean, that's interesting, and Robin, against your point, ultimately, there's nothing for this board to do, it's up to the state's determination, right?
Only if we have objections to the state.
By the way, if any, if any current liquor license owner has an objection, they should go to the state.
Sure.
Okay, so if anybody has any comments, send them over to Ms. Clancy.
Thank you.
The one last thing I was hoping we could talk about tonight, from the Village Center Alliance presentation earlier, was Downtown After Sundown funding, and I don't know if it's premature to discuss without getting a little more, as far as, you know, how the sponsorship's going and where you guys are at, as far as, you know, do you feel like you've tapped everybody that could be the sponsor, and, you know, you're kind of at the end of it, or, you know, are there still people that you're talking to?
Can I ask the village administrator a question first?
Sure.
Because when we were doing the budget, and I had the meeting with yourself and Matt and whoever else was there, I had asked a question about Downtown After Sundown, and said, originally, we had this in the budget, and then they subtracted out sponsorship, so was that money included, that $15,000, was that included in your budget as a potential line item, and we were going to subtract out, or did that get taken out of the final budget?
That's rolled into the overall...
Because I thought we included it in the budget, and I thought that we would take the sponsorships and ask them to, how to use that money for something else or to give it back, that's how I sort of remember it, because in the past, that's how we've done it, and for Ms. Hackett, I like to ask, is that, a couple of years ago, we had a interest from Whole Foods in doing it, and we in turn went to Even Gourmet first, who then put up some money, because they wanted a market coming from another town, but again, I would say, if Whole Foods is interested, we should reach out to them, Ashley wants to put the money up at Pathmark, the two big supermarkets in town, then fine, otherwise, open it up to outside South Orange. It might, it's up to him, be my guess.
This is still on? So we have reached out to a couple of the banks in the area, we did reach out to Ashley, we reached out to T-Mobile, we've reached out to farmers and some of the sponsors from last year. So far, BCB Community Bank is the only one that officially said no for this season, it's still out there with the others, but I followed up and we haven't heard anything back, and as Matt Glass pointed out earlier, we kind of need to get it started if it's going to happen, and we can continue the effort to secure sponsorship, and we could try Whole Foods, or if anyone has any suggestions, I'm happy to reach out to anyone you think might fund it.
What I'd suggest is, if there's something in the line to get started, but really, really, really hold y'all to the commitment to continue to look for sponsors, because it's critical, I think, as soon as this warm weather just breaks, and if it holds, that we really need to continue what we, what we've started, as a tradition every, every year.
I think a couple of years ago, we did, was when they were shortfall, we actually agreed to put up, I want to say the first $6,000, whatever we did, if you remember, Michael, we put up, we put up the first $5,000 or $6,000, which bought you the first month while you guys went and looked for sponsorships, and that's what we committed to upfront, and then we, and by then, they actually got sponsors for about two-thirds of the remaining amount or something, and it came up, but, you know, rather than commit to the whole thing upfront, we could say we'll commit to $5,000, gets us through the first third, and play it that way, and did you find the answer to the question?
Well, I was looking both in terms of our budget and in the CID budget, and the CID budget, you know, has some generic income lines from the Village Hall, which added up to the total that it added up to, they did anticipate in their budget, income for sundown, $10,000, I guess I was being sort of cautious versus the 15, and then in the CID budget, the expenses on sundown were, I think, reflected as $12,200. You know, I mean, obviously, we, our allocation of that was somewhat nebulous, there's money at the, you know, what was originally going to be a full break for business, I mean, ultimately, this question is up to money, once we commit to give the money to them, is it up to them and what they spend?
All right. You might want to reach out to his vineyard that wants to open up in Giorgio's, and see if they want to advertise.
So one question I had, have you been considering to lower in sort of the price point, are you only going either 15 or five, and that's it?
No, we've been open to any increments of money, we'll, we'll take all sponsorship levels, yeah.
I didn't know that PowerPoint only referenced the 15 and the 3.5.
I think that's what we went out with initially, but we went back and revisited and said, you could sponsor, you know, an individual a month, you could sponsor a couple weeks, it could be, you know, there's 20 weeks, we could have 20 sponsors individually for that weekend, everyone could own their own weekend, we can break it up any number of ways, you could take the month of June, you could take the month of July, month of August, and so on.
When are you looking for them to start, Lisa?
Well, ideally, they would start Memorial Day weekend.
That's late, usually, we start it earlier, you know, once the weather starts getting warm...
I checked Carol's records, and from what happened last year, it happened Memorial Day weekend, yeah, so I don't know what happened the year before that, but at least last year, it was Memorial Day weekend. Memorial Day weekend.
It was one year we did start it earlier because the weather was unnaturally warm. It was in April.
And then one year we started early and it was really cold, so you just can't wait.
One other thing we could also do is we could look at some grants that we have. We actually have some sitting funds that we've used for similar type events, which maybe we can pull money from that. Barry?
Barry?
We have some grant opportunity, money that we have sitting and things that we've used for similar type.
That's, that may be a possibility.
So maybe we can use that grant again for this. Probably falls in the same category.
Let's talk about it tomorrow.
And what kind of direction can we give to Lisa now? You know, I mean, are we going to wait till after you guys meet tomorrow? Or, because I think we really want to get going on this.
Yeah. She needs to have a say.
I'd be okay with committing to that first third right now.
Pardon me?
I'd be okay with committing to the first third.
I would, too.
I would, too.
Do the first $5,000, have, and then see if any of these grants might work, and then have Lisa do some more fundraising. I know that in the first year, I think, Janine, did you sponsor one with, I think you and I sponsored a night?
Definitely.
If I'm not, and it was a small amount, it might have been 300 or, it's so long ago, I don't remember.
I think it was $250 for a night, so at $250, you have the same sort of cost, you can easily do the math.
Yeah.
You might be able to get, even, I can get you a list of individual real estate agents that might want to do a night or a half of a night for $250 or $3, give them a little bit publicity.
Okay, great, yeah.
You might be able to, something, I mean, I think the numbers are big right now, and maybe that's the reason you're having an issue. I know it's so much easier to get three sponsors as opposed to 20 sponsors, it's complicated. But if we can do the first $5,000, maybe you can work with smaller numbers and get the rest.
We should do the first contract before the election and get seven candidates.
That'd be awesome. That's right, the 12th.
I think the message is that if you need us, we're going to be there to support at least the beginning of it, although, you know, hopefully, people that you are asking to sponsor are not watching right now.
Correct. Keep it on the queue, too.
Yeah. So we can be your silent backers, you know, if needed. You know, I think we're prepared to do that, it sounds like. And if there's anything that we can do to help secure, you know, sponsorships, if any, if it would help you for any of us to come with you to meet with anybody if they're on the fence, you know, I think, I think any of us would be happy to do that.
Yeah, I think if you know of folks, any ideas you have, even the police chief offered to personally reach out to a few people and talk to them. So I think we use Nancy's idea of maybe, and what Janine said about sponsoring an individual night or picking a weekend and making it a little smaller sponsorship level.
That would help.
20 smaller sponsorships might be easier to get. Huh?
Well, turn to the question, want to sponsor.
Well, Seaton Hawke would certainly help.
Right.
But so, yeah, we'll definitely be.
Steve wants a night for himself. Yeah.
So I, yeah, I think that's, you know, the takeaway from us. And again, whatever we can do to help, we'll, we'll send you any ideas and, you know, let's make sure, you know, we all stay in touch and at least with the full board, you know, in the next two weeks to, you know, kind of let us know where you're at and.
Okay, great. So I should move forward with planning it for that weekend, Memorial Day weekend, and start booking accounts?
Yeah, and I think even if you, you know, a couple of weeks sooner, you know, I think all of us would, would be okay with that.
Okay, I'll check availability of the bands and see what we can get. Great, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
All right, is there anything else?
I move to a adjournment?
All right.
Two.
Adjournment, thank you.
How about?